Call this council meeting to order. Our normal procedure, of course, is to have one here to sing "Oh, Canada" for us in our national anthem. However, we do not have a vocalist with us tonight, but staff has done the sleuthing. They have a musical recording without voice. So, guess who's going to sing "Oh, Canada" tonight? All of us. So I would invite everyone to stand for the singing of our national anthem. It's been moved by Councilor Etherington that the minutes of the regular meeting held May 5, 2014, and special meetings held May 5 and 12 as mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Councillor Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for planning and strategic initiatives committee item number three for the central transit corridor, Rapid Transit Station study area. I have my parents' own property near that study corridor.
Okay. Councillor Ainaitis.
Yeah, through you, Mayor Zair. I have pecuniary interest on planning in the Strategic Initiatives Committee on item number three, as my family owns property.
Okay. We'll go directly into the delegations. Kay Elge. Remind all delegations that you have five minutes to make your presentation. You'll receive, the clerk will ring a bell at 30 seconds when you hear that.
Okay. There we go.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. My name is Kay Elge, and I'm president of Architectural Conservancy Ontario, North Waterloo Region. ACO is a provincial charity which promotes the conservation and adaptive reuse of structures, districts, and landscapes of architectural, historical, or cultural significance. We're here tonight to congratulate the city of Kitchener for its wisdom in adding another 24 properties to your list of places of cultural heritage value or interest. At least, we hope you'll be adding those properties to your registry tonight, as recommended by your advisory committee on Kitchener heritage and so ably researched by your excellent heritage staff. We applaud the range of your choices. It's great to see you're extending your idea of properties to include structures like the Oktoberfest maypole at 19 Benton Street and the wonderful Art Deco pumping station on Strain Street. We're happy to see such a great range of architectural styles, everything from Ontario Gothic at 20 Linden Avenue to the Queen Anne House on Frederick Street, as well as the Italianate house on Madison Avenue South and Edwardian one on Weber Street West. And it's nice to see the special setting of 61 Madison Avenue South being recognized, the location of the house and the contribution that it makes to the continuity and character of the Madison Street South streetscape. And we were especially pleased to see the addition of a mid-century modern building at 82 Weber Street East. As Rice University architectural historian Stephen Fox said, "Each generation has its own ignorance of recent stuff." Buildings a mere 50 or 60 years old don't seem special to us because a lot of us have grown up with them, even when they've been specially designed for their original clients, as this building was. But once buildings get to be 75 or 80 years old, everyone knows they're special. So the trick is to get them remaining long enough for the next generation to appreciate this old-fashioned architectural style. So we're very happy to see Kitchener heritage taking steps to preserve its mid-century modern buildings, many of which will be highlighted in the Building Waterloo Region Festival of Architecture, which is taking place this summer. It's also great to see another industrial vernacular building being added to the list, the Mitchell Button Factory at 97 Victoria Street North, which is a great example of a heritage building being adaptively reused for the good of the community. And we're happy to read in the minutes from the Kitchener Heritage Report of how thrilled the owners of 234 Cameron Street North and 86 Louisa were to have their properties recognized and how they contributed additional information about them. It's really great to see people excited about this contribution to all of us. The church at 53 Church Street is especially important to ACO North Waterloo Region because we supervised a history student named Jessica Foote through Wilfrid Laurier University's Community Placement Service Program who researched the history of the building. So it's really great to see her work and our involvement pay off. There's quite a lot of misunderstanding about what listing a heritage property means. And as soon as they hear the phrase heritage property, some people immediately think their hands are going to be tied forever, that they won't be able to change the color of the paint or repair their roof without spending an arm and a leg on museum-quality materials. They fear they'll be dictated to forever by heartless city bureaucrats or opinionated citizens who have volunteered, well, I haven't volunteered to sit on the municipal heritage committee, but I could be an opinionated citizen, I think. But if you read the Ontario Heritage Act, or even simpler, go to this page on the Ministry of Tourism, Culture, and Sport website, I think you'll quickly calm down. The Ontario Heritage Act 2005 lays out the rules that municipalities must follow in fully designating properties, district or landscapes, as having cultural heritage value. It also provides and encourages a lower level of protection for a heritage other than the full designation, which is keeping a list of properties that may have cultural heritage value or interest to the community. And note I've stressed the term "may." When the Ontario Building Code was amended in 2006 to provide for an accelerated timeframe, they realized that the normal 10 or 20 days might not be enough for, to give heritage, review for heritage. So that's why the listing is important, so it gives 60 days notice. And really, Kitchener staff go far and above and beyond what is required by the ministry if the property's, but they're doing more.
Can you wrap up, please?
So, oh, I can finish. I thought you cut my sound off. I'm sorry. Okay, because this is my last slide. And in addition, requirements for designation, again, lots of people see the checklist and see like there's nine things on there, and you can see there's a lot of no's, but in fact, to be fully designated, only one of the criteria is required. And again, Kitchener staff have really done pretty well, all the next work of it in giving you a lot of information about the value of these properties. So in summary, we're very appreciative of the work done by the Heritage Kitchener Municipal Heritage Advisory Committee and heritage planning staff, and we hope you will support their well-researched recommendations tonight.
Thank you. There may be some questions. Councillor Ainaitis.
Thanks for your presentation. The one question I have is, you put it in a phrase, that Kitchener's gone above and beyond registering buildings. Can you elaborate that from what the province mandates?
They've done more work at this stage than they're required to do. Ultimately, if they were to fully designate it, this work would be required, but as I showed on that slide, at this point, what a lot of municipalities does is give a list of addresses, and you're earmarking ones that may have cultural heritage value, so that when, it's a help for you when you're planning an area plan and just kind of earmarking these things. So they've really done a superlative job, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I see no more questions. Thank you, Kay.
Okay.
On the same subject, though, we do have one other delegation, so we'll go to that delegation next. That's Ralph Newman. Is Ralph Newman here? Mr. Newman is here to speak to clause three of the Heritage Report. Welcome, Mr. Newman.
I don't hear well. I'm sorry.
All right. Welcome, Mr. Newman. You have five minutes to make your presentation. You have five minutes to make your presentation.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, councillors, I find my name on the registry, and I do not want to be there. It seems on that area of the street, there are only four houses, and someone who is, I think, developing it is buzzing around. I know if he bought one, and I don't know what else will happen. And I noticed, I'd seen on television where the redevelopment of the area is being looked at, so with the size of the properties, they obviously could yield a lot more units. Now, I talked to him, or he'd casually, and he said, now, he already said I was on the registry, and he was no longer interested. Now, I get on the registry because of the character of the building, and walking along Church Street, I find a number of properties of identical structure and vintage, I would think, and same design, none of which are on the list. And I've lived there a long time, and, well, getting back to the redevelopment, I noticed, I gather somebody redeveloped on Cedar Street, and the one, the neighbors there are sitting looking at an 18-foot wall brick. They went right down to the back of the property, and I don't know if that would be envisaged for that street, but I would hate to be isolated there with that sitting beside me, if it don't, I don't know if it'll occur. Now, I cannot see, understand why I end up on Madison, the only house that gets on the list, and there's very few houses even on Church Street, even though they have identical character, are not there. Everyone I mention getting on the registry, well, maybe they don't really understand, but the only comment I get is, oh, you don't want that to happen. Now, I've, well, the house has been in the family for a long time. I would hate to see it really taken down, and yet I don't want to be left out, and I sit now with finding myself in a position that I do not have the same, will not have quite the same rights as the rest of the community there. Now, the encroachment, I gather, is just that the city would want more notice about tearing down, but it is an encroachment. And I don't know what effect it might have on me, but I guess that's basically all I wanted to bring forward, and I would appreciate not being on it. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Thank you. And for clarification of the council, I had said it was item number three. I was mixing up two. Mr. Newman represents 61 Madison Avenue, which is the third delegation, C, which is on the main list. My reference to number three, which is 82 Weaver Street, has been deferred, but I'll come back to that in a moment. So we're just dealing with Mr. Newman's at 61 Madison Avenue. And I believe there are some questions, and I would ask councillors to speak directly into the microphone for this one. Councillor Fernandez.
Thank you. I'll just wait for Mr. Newman to come back down. I have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Newman. Have you spoken to our heritage staff at the city?
Again, I have a hearing problem, and...
Okay. Have you spoken to our heritage staff here at the city about your property?
Would it be possible for me to come here?
Yes.
I'm wondering if, Michelle, you could go over and directly stand beside Mr. Newman and perhaps help us there? And do you know whether or not...
They just wanted to know if you had spoken with staff.
With...
With me.
Oh, yeah. I took for you.
Could you answer the question, Michelle?
So Mr. Newman and I did meet, I think, last week. We met for about an hour, and we went through his concerns and responded to his questions.
Okay.
I would say the lady is very helpful.
That's good. I'm glad to hear that. Michelle and Mr. Newman, you were able to resolve some of the issues, or you were not able to resolve them?
So she's asking if we resolved your concerns?
No.
Okay. All right. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Well, my concern is I would not like to be on the list, and I, you don't have the choice, I wouldn't imagine.
Well, I think that's council's decision.
You couldn't have resolved my concern.
Yeah.
Counsel will be making that decision this evening, Mr. Newman. We will make that decision this evening.
The council will make the decision this evening.
See, oh, look, I guess I will be informed somehow?
Yeah, well, we're not...
You can wait, and they'll make it.
There are some other questions. Just keep Mr. Newman there for a minute. There are other questions. Councillor Singh.
Yeah, just based on circumstances, I'll try to be brief as possible. So your primary concern, sir, as a property, as a homeowner, is that by listing, it will diminish any interest there is on your property currently for development, correct?
So he's asking if the, your concern is that the interest on the property could be diminished if someone wanted to buy it and redevelop it?
Yes, and it might be difficult, in fact, to sell, depending at some time whatever happens. Now, my thinking of the whole street, I've lived there a long time, and I would think the whole thing should disappear.
And through your presentation, what I understood was that it's not just your expectation that would happen, but people have come forward with an expressed interest, and you've said that there would be a tangible effect to the property value, correct?
So he asked if, that you have been, that there is an expectation that you think the property might be redeveloped, and that you've in fact been approached by people already?
Yes.
And that there was concerns with the property value associated with those inquiries?
Yeah, and I don't like the encroachment on my rights.
Okay.
Which, as you pointed out, were not diminished that much at the moment, but the perceptions of other people are quite different.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Councillor Etherington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My question is to Michelle and not to...
Okay, just hold on to that then for a moment. Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, I have a question of staff, after which I might, I would like to put something to the delegate.
Okay. So, Michelle, two questions for you first, and then just keep Mr. Newman there for a moment. Since, Councillor Etherington, let's go to you first for a question to our staff.
They're going to ask me a few questions, but they want you to stay up here.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to ask Michelle. Michelle, we're already deferring a couple of these. Is it possible to defer this one along with the others, so we can talk further to Mr. Newman?
It's definitely possible. We have had one meeting already, but if council would like us to sit down again and have a discussion, possibly with the ward councillor, that's definitely an option.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Gazola.
So I want to ask a general question. If I have a home, a property, and I want to demolish it, what do I have to do? Do I, I have to get a, I have to get the approval of the city, and I have to wait how long?
So you would apply for your building permit through the building department, and they wouldn't be able to issue that demolition permit for 60 days?
No, no, but if it's, I have a property that's not listed or anything.
Oh.
What is, what are the, what's the answer then?
If it's not listed, it depends on the type of property, but typically, a residential property is 10 business days.
So this is what we're talking? We're talking the difference between 10 days and 60 days?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make that clear. Is that clear, is that clear to the delegate, that what we're talking is really a difference between 10 days and 60 days?
So Councillor Gazola wanted to know if it was clear to you that the, one of the implications is the difference if you applied for a demolition permit, that instead of having it in 10 business days, it would be 60 business days?
Yep. I understand that.
You, okay.
That seems to be an impediment to anybody that gets mentioned to.
Okay.
Councillor Gazola.
Yeah, no, you mentioned in your discussion that you've been left out. Can you just expand on that? Have other properties been sold that you know of, or what do you mean by that you've been left out because of the possibility of your property being listed?
So Councillor Gazola is asking about, when you were speaking, you mentioned that your property was left out, and he wanted you to elaborate on that in terms of the development that might be happening near you.
Well, the development that might be happening, the building sits, the last house on that side of the street, or that area, is institutional. So, and the one immediately next to me is the one that I have the impression that the man wants to redevelop.
Can I ask you, are you looking to be redeveloped within the next few months?
Councillor Gazola wants to know if you're looking to redevelop your property within the next few months.
No.
Thank you, and I do want to imagine you do have a beautiful home.
He wanted to mention you have a beautiful home.
There's one more, one more question for you, Michelle. Councillor Singh.
Yeah, Michelle, just a quick follow-up. So, just more clarification for us to know exactly what transpires when, for a demolition permit is approached. So I have a property, it's not heritage listed or designated. By applying for a demolition permit, does that automatically trigger a review by the Heritage Committee to see if that demolition can be approved, or is that just minimal 10-day, just a necessary time period that's required, but without requiring for a Heritage Committee review?
The 10-day that I mentioned is a Building Code requirement. If a property's not listed or not designated, they wouldn't require any heritage approval.
And if a property is listed, and then the additional time is necessary, and additional time is necessary only because you are not automatically allowed to demolish, but it has to be within the purview of the Heritage Committee and Heritage Staff to determine if that property can be further than designated, in which case you would definitely not be allowed to demolish, correct?
Yes, insofar as it would ultimately be council's decision if we designate, and there is an appeal mechanism that the owner could seek for both the designation as well as if they applied for demolition.
But those are the two very clear differences, not just the holding time, but really the ease of the demolition or the necessary processes if your property is listed or it's designated. So, thank you for that clarity.
Okay. Thank you. Let me take your seat.
That's it?
Yep, we can sit down.
Thank you.
Okay, we will deal with clause two of the Heritage Committee only at this point in time. And Councillor Etherington, I'll ask you to bring that forward, but I also want to say at this time that clause three of the, this is related to 82 Weaver Street East, the representatives of the property have met with staff, and they have mutually agreed to defer that to September at the earliest. I understand that Councillor Etherington from Heritage Committee and Councillor Dangland Graeme are aware of this deferral. So we'll deal with item number two. Just wanted to clarify that, because I had given the two, mixed up the two addresses a moment ago. So just want to bring forward item number two, and not read all of the addresses, though, of course. Okay?
Well, through you, Mr. Mayor, some clarification. If I wanted to ask that Mr. Newman's case of 61 Madison be deferred, should we do that for us?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, then I move that we defer it to Heritage Committee meeting of June 3, in order to have these issues further discussed with staff.
All right. Is there a second for that deferral? Councillor Yatsky. We'll deal with the deferral only. Those in favor of the deferral of that one item? Opposed? The motion for deferral is carried to the June 3 Heritage Committee. The balance of number two?
Yeah, I would ask council to approve the balance of number two in the Heritage Agenda.
Okay. And it is seconded by, on your list there, on your sheet. Who is seconding it?
Seconder for that, please. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor.
Second by Councillor Singh.
Do you want to report that to the members?
Yes, I was just coming to the list. Councillor, I had to get the motion first, and then the, and the seconder. Councillor Glenn Graeme.
I appreciate that. I have residents in the audience tonight, the Reitzels, who might have some pause about some of their properties that, and we have a scheduled meeting to discuss with Michelle some of their properties, and I, please forgive me, I'm not sure, you have an extensive list, if there's any in this list tonight that are your properties that we should be looking at for a deferral as well?
No, council.
There's no listed here?
No, not tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. So I'm fine with all the properties that are listed here, then. Thank you.
Councillor Davy.
Thank you. No comment on this. I just wanted to point out that I had a message noting that the live streaming of council this evening is apparently stuck on Councillor Fernandez, and just thought I would point that out, so.
It's probably, it's probably a static shot. You hope it was a good one. All right. With that flash news item, Councillor Banovic.
Thanks. Just very quickly, Mr. Mayor, we'll be supporting this. I think, you know, looking at listing these properties on the register really doesn't present a huge challenge to the, to the affected property owners, and I think most importantly, it helps keep those properties in our, in our attention as we deal with them. And I think the other part that it does is it really recognizes some of the properties that make our neighborhoods and individual properties in our neighborhoods unique, and that's something that we've heard from our residents before, is positive and something that we know really allows us to celebrate our shared history as a community.
Councillor Singh.
Yes, just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to support the properties that are listed. I think it really freezes in time some aspect of our previous heritage and history, and I'm pleased to see these, a number of these properties... And I'm pleased to see these, a number of these properties with their unique characteristics. And only I have exception and concern when property owners come forward and they are not forthcomingly supportive of their property either being listed or designated, in which case I think whenever a homeowner's rights are being diminished, I can't be supportive. But other properties, obviously those, those owners did receive notice, and they have no concern with the listing, and I'm pleased to, to support it.
Okay. There are no other questions, so I'll call the question then, the vote. A recorded vote has been called for, and this is the, all the items in number two with the exception of 61 Madison Avenue South. You can now vote. Those in favor? That's a unanimous vote. So we'll come back to the Heritage Report for the others in due course. The item number six B under the delegations, that relates to that 82 Weaver and number three that we just, I just spoke of. And so that one is to be deferred, we'll come back to that one later on. There is no representative here for that property, I believe. 82 Weaver Street? East, 82 Weaver East? Okay. We will come back to that. All right, we will, we have two, we potentially had two delegations, we have just one. Tara Chartrand is listed for the flag policy. Originally, we received an email that said she would like to register but has withdrawn. So we do have one other one, though. Gary Potter, do I have that correct? Welcome.
Hello. Thanks for hearing me, Mayor and councillors. My name's Gary Potter, I'm a professor at Wilfrid Laurier University, and I am a heterosexual. I was, in spite of that fact, in case some of you think that's an odd thing, I was very proud when the rainbow flag was flown by Canada. I think there's been some confusion in this issue from the reports I've heard, from the previous discussion in council, from the reports in the record, that it's, the relevant categories are homosexual, heterosexual, and they are not. The relevant categories are sexism and anti-sexism. Canada made a very strong, supportive gesture of justice, and I felt proud as a Canadian for that. This council has been asked to, along with many other cities, to make a similar gesture. So far, it has refused. That is a statement. That has nothing to do with your personal sexuality. It is a statement of your politics. It is a statement that you do not support equality and social justice. That's it. There are only two possibilities, sexist, anti-sexist. I would ask this council to look to their better nature, to do what is right and support the waving proudly of the rainbow flag. I understand there's amendments to have it allowed in Speaker's Corner and other places. The major thing is the principle that the council does not make Kitchener stand out amongst Canadian cities, stand out shamefully. We need to support this. Thank you.
Okay, are there maybe some questions? Just double-check, just hang on. No, there are not. Thank you. So we will deal with that matter. There are two, as you can see, notice, notices of motion on the agenda, the written agenda that was circulated. However, there has been a great deal of effort in the last few days by some councillors, and what we have in front of us this evening is a revised couple of motions that will deal with this matter. And we'll go to that at this point in time. And there are two speakers, and they are the two movers, I think. Councillor Glen Graham?
Thank you very much. So the first order of business, Mr. Mayor, is I will withdraw my motion and in favor of the, the joint motion that we have. And I will read the, the first motion.
Shall we just, I'm going to go to councillor Verbanovic, just so to get on the record that, are you withdrawing yours as well?
Yes, I'm also withdrawing the motion that's on the printed agenda in favor of the joint motion that is before us, and maybe we can ask the clerk to put that up on the screen.
Okay. Okay, so back to you, councillor Glen Graham.
Thank you. So I will read the first motion. Whereas the city of Kitchener has in the past had a community flag pole at Rockway Gardens, which in 1993 was replaced by a community flag pole at the edge of the Duke Street Garden at Kitchener City Hall. And whereas Kitchener's 20-year-old flag protocol prevents community groups from flying flags outside City Hall to mark special events or festivals, therefore be it resolved that two community flag poles be designated for the city of Kitchener, one at the Duke Street Gardens, which is at the corner of Duke Street and Young Street at Kitchener City Hall, and the second at Speaker's Corner, which is at King Street and Benton Street. Be it further resolved that funding for the new community flag pole at Speaker's Corners and installation of approximately $2,500 be funded out of the 2014 capital budget from Facilities Management. Shall I?
That, that is moved by yourself and seconded by?
Councillor Etherington.
Councillor Etherington, okay. So are you prepared to speak to it?
I am prepared to speak to it.
Go ahead.
And I, I will speak to this now, and I'll, I'll speak later to the other motion. I think that it's time for, for the city of Kitchener to recognize its new role and its new place in society. And I'm very grateful that we have progressive people in our community that recognize that leadership comes in all forms and colors, and that they're taking, they've taken a proud place in our, our diverse and inclusive city. And we have a, a policy on diversity, we have a policy on inclusiveness. I think this is an opportunity for us to live up to that and to be proud of all of our citizens and demonstrate a generosity of spirit that says that we're including everyone, but we're not excluding people unless there is some kind of disagreement with the city. This is an opportunity for us to, to say, let's stand for inclusiveness. And so I'm very proud that, and I appreciate the, the mayor's role in this, that recognizing there was two motions, that suggesting that we move it jointly, I think that's entirely appropriate. And I'm, I'm proud that we're, we're doing it all together.
On the first motion only, then, councillor Verbanovic?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I, I too am pleased that we're working on this together to try to bring about a, a change. For, for me, revisiting this issue many years after the, the existing policy was put in place is about recognizing the people, the culture, and the events that make this a great community to live in. It's about celebrating both the diversity and the inclusivity which reflects our community and which I believe that we as a council want to be known for. I think when we go back 20 years ago, the change that was made, made sense at the time to move away from a community flag pole because of some of the issues that we were dealing with in the world, in, through jurisprudence and so on. But a lot of time has passed, and the world is a different place 20 years later. I think when we look at the, the list of, of communities that have a community flag pole now, it's significant, and I know one of the delegations, Mr. Jim Parrott, who was here last week and is again, is here again today, did a lot of research. The city of Toronto was, was very helpful when I spoke with them in terms of some of their experience, as were other cities like, like Markham and so on, and the two parts of this motion reflect that. I think the notion of, of going to the, the two poles, one being the, the historical community flag pole on, on this block as well as Speaker's Corner, which is the place that's recognized as one of our places for, for free speech, it makes sense. It, A, gives groups an option, and B, in the event that we do from time to time have two groups that want to have a flag at the same time, it also gives us a way to, to address it. In looking at the city of Toronto list, I actually find it quite interesting of the kinds of flags that they've flown. Some of the, some of the groups include the Alzheimer Awareness Day, epilepsy awareness, Autism Ontario, World Refugees Day, National Aboriginal Day, the rainbow flag, Movember, stop bullying awareness, and then flags of various countries, including Ukraine, Ireland, France, Greece, Portugal. It's a wide variety of, of, of flags that obviously celebrate all different aspects of community life and celebrate various groups of citizens in our, in, in their community. And I believe this will do the same for, for our community. I think what's equally important is that when we deal with it, that we're also very clear in terms of how the process would work, and we'll come to that in the next part of the motion. Thank you.
Councillor Etherington?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad to see we've got another opportunity to, and address, to address an issue that has been successfully handled by many other Ontario municipalities. By supporting this comprehensive and well-researched motion, and I certainly support it, this council has one last chance to show a little vision and do what is right by updating our outdated flag protocol. By exercising this kind of leadership, we can facilitate another outlet for our community groups and at the same time move with the times and help create a city that respects differences, diversity, and as one of our delegates said, social justice. I'm also pleased to see that the two candidates so far in the upcoming mayoralty race followed through tonight on my recent unsuccessful attempts to create community flag poles. And I admire the fact they don't want to lead a municipality that is continually embarrassed every time the gay pride issue resurfaces. I'm absolutely convinced the sky will not fall if we show a little courage, push aside institutional discrimination, and rework our flag policies to recognize and support a wide variety of community groups that includes our gay community. I like the idea of having a community flag pole at Speaker's Corner. And despite the fact I have a few questions about the second pole being at the rear instead of the front of City Hall, I intend to vote in favor of this motion. In the name of inclusiveness, I would strongly urge other councillors to do the same. And, Mr. Mayor, I had one question to either councillor Verbanovic or councillor Dan Glen Graham. Could I ask that question now?
Yes.
It's just a quick question. I, I appreciate the fact that the flag would be viewed by future LRT users at the back of City Hall at Duke. But I wondered if they could tell me, if, either of them could tell me why the flag pole at the rear of City Hall is a more suitable location than the front of City Hall?
Who wishes to speak to that? It's a question to one of the two movers? I'm waiting, waiting for, okay, there we go. Councillor Glen Graham?
There is some history here, as I outlined, and I think that it's, it's meant to connote the fact that there's an opportunity to have the flag still at City Hall, but in a spot where there's less controversy perhaps, and also, you know, has some history behind it. So it's not meant to be second-class in any way.
Councillor Verbanovic?
I think the other point that is raised, and again, a lot of this is really taken from how cities like, like Markham dealt with this. We have our, our three flag poles that are on the King Street side of the building that reflect the Canadian, Ontario, and, and city of Kitchener flag. And the only time that that gets changed, and in fact, through this whole process, discovered that this was actually missing in our existing policy, is if a member of the royal family, the governor general, or the lieutenant governor are, are in town. And that always happened in practice, but technically wasn't in the policy. The, I think the, as councillor Glen Graham said, the historical community flag pole was located by the Duke Street Gardens. And quite frankly, I, I think as, as councillor Etherington pointed out, with the, with the new LRT that's going to be coming through, the ION, and so on, quite frankly, there'll be more people passing there and more people passing at Speaker's Corners on a daily basis than there will be on the King Street facade of the building.
Councillor Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's before us, just speaking to some of the comments that have been said by some delegations as well as in previous meetings and, and today as well, I just want to make a comment on comments such as that this community or this council may not be showing support for equality, or the fact that we have to, through changing of this policy, we have to show that we're proud of all our citizens. I think that was never a question. I think there was never a question of inequality or the fact that we're not proud of all aspects of our very diverse and unique culture that we call home here in this community. I think what was in question was that we had a policy over the last 20 years that has helped safeguard division in this community, a good policy. Now, policies do come to, they have a life cycle sometimes. They do need to be tweaked, they do need to be changed. And I supported that from the onset of a review of the policy to see what things need to be done. But there were motions that were forward prior to this that were somewhat rash in, in the wording of it, where it could have added ambiguity as well as more problems in the future, which would have helped to hinder the essence of what we're trying to do here, which is to show support, show inclusivity, and show the pride of diversity and equality within our culture here. And so that's why it took time, it was painstaking, it was hard, but it took time and the right course to put, to have before us. And I commend both councillor Verbanovic and councillor Glen Graham, as well councillor Etherington, to, to put their minds together in what, what's before us, which is a reasonable and a right path to go now. So, speaking to that, I support what's before us, but I do not support any type of indication that this community, this council, leading up to this, managed inadequately or that we showed insincerity to groups that we have always shown in the past strong support for, and this community will continue to show support for that community. Thank you.
Councillor Davy?
Thank you. Questions, now would be appropriate for questions of staff as well, Mayor Zer?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I have two questions, and I'm, I'm glad to see the motion is about the flag policy and makes no specific reference to the rainbow flag, which I would love to see flying, but anyway. My first question, I suppose they're both of legal, and that is, if this motion passes, is Kitchener protected from controversial requests for, to fly flags such as pro-life or pro-choice flags? Or another, put another, put another way, would we run the risk if we approve this policy of having to run those flags at City Hall?
Who are you directing that question to?
I would say legal.
Ms. McDonald?
Yes, through you, your worship, I would suggest that in order for me to answer that question, we may want to journ into caucus, because I'd be providing you with legal advice.
Okay, could you, would it be possible for you to advise, though, us having to retire to caucus, if your advice would be substantially different from the advice that we received two weeks ago? With respect to the two motions? Would it be substantially different or more or less the same?
She's thinking.
I would suggest the advice would be similar to what you received two weeks ago.
Okay. And that's, that's fine. And the second question, perhaps you can advise in general terms, but I've noticed that the municipalities, the other 18 municipalities, with the exception, with few exceptions, have all ch-. have all changed their policies in the last, say, three or four years. If there was litigation or settlements related to these new policies, would it be reasonable to assume that we would have seen any outcome, either publicly, or would staff have any knowledge of those settlements as of yet?
ms McDonald?
Again, I would suggest that that question necessitates legal advice that I would want to give to you in a closed session.
Okay. That's fine. I think that's, I guess, that's sort of the concern that I wanted to raise with respect to why we made some of the decisions we made two weeks ago, but I would have comment as well. Mayor Zare, are we taking comments at the same time?
Yes, we are.
Okay. From day one, this was not, this issue was not with respect to flying the Rainbow Flag. I think every member of this council clearly would love to be able to have flown the Rainbow Flag if it was, if it meant we could only fly that flag. That wasn't the issue at all. The issue is what happens, what could happen, if we approve a change in the policy. So I understand the communities come out and unfortunately, taking our refusal to open the door to this in a different direction, as saying that we are not supportive of the Rainbow Flag, when I think to one of us that we are. But my concern is what happens when we start flying these other flags, such as, you know, if we do have to fly these pro-life and pro-choice flags. The Rainbow Flag itself is absolutely inclusive 100%, but the intention behind the Rainbow Flag movement is to bring us all together when some of these other flags, and there's numerous examples, could end up bringing us apart. So with that, I would ask only in terms of seeking a solution for both of us, and I received many emails that were quite content with the flag at Speaker's Corner, I would ask only that we vote on the flag poll at City Hall and the flag poll at Speaker's Corner separately, if we could. Mayor Zare?
So your request is to divide the first clause?
Yes, so essentially...
Sorry, it would be the, sorry, it's the first resolution operative clause, speaking to the two community flag polls.
Exactly. No, just, it would be the third clause, so I would want to vote on the Duke and Young Street in a separate, separately, to King and Benton.
But the third paragraph, which is the first operative clause, also speaks about each of the two of them.
Sorry, that's correct. Yes, both of those then.
Okay.
Thank you.
councillor Gazola?
Yeah, I have a question of staff. I'll have some comments later, but just...
Well, we're, questions and comments all together right now. So go ahead with your questions.
Now, I want to...
Just on, just on the first, the first motion, but questions and comment together right now on the first motion only.
Actually, my question's on the second motion.
Okay. So can you hold that then?
I can hold it.
Do you have any comment on the first motion? Because that was the time.
Yeah, I...
Put your mic.
I'm not sure...
You don't need to, I'm just asking.
No, no, I do have comments, and I'm sort of looking at both the motions together. I don't see, I find it confusing somewhat as to...
Well, procedurally, I think you understand, we have to take them one at a time.
Yeah. Well, okay, I'll say what I have to say.
Go right ahead.
I might as well. I'm really concerned that this whole topic was hijacked from us and turned into a question of support and lack of support for the gay community, and that really upset me, and it has come out as if you don't fly, fly the gay flag, you're opposed to the gay community, their style of life, morality, and all of these issues, and to me, that was, that was never the question. I was here, and 20 years, I'm looking, I'm here in 20 years, it's a long, long time, 20 years just around the corner. I was here when the policy was put in place, and I know why the policy was put in place. We had, we had several incidents that caused us a lot of problems, and that's why we put a policy into place, which has served us well for 20 years. It has served us well to this point, and the policy is not broken, and I don't believe it needs to be fixed. And, you know, it was turned, it's been mentioned now, the Alzheimer's group and Movember and all, I didn't hear anything from those people when we, when we turned down the flag policy that was before us. I just heard from, from one group. And I respect the group, and I respect our democratic system, where we've had, they've had an opportunity to proudly stand up and make their points known, and they've inundated us with emails, and that's, that's what it's all about. I must say, when I receive emails from the public, whether they're in the ward that I represent or not, I try to answer them, I try to acknowledge receipt of them, so that people know we do get your emails and we do read them, and we are interested, and I've always said, thank you for taking the time to write and the prizes of your feelings. I was a bit taken aback in this incident, and this, with this issue, on the number of comments coming back that weren't very, very nice, but nonetheless, I respect that group, I respect what they've done, and I wish them well. However, I will not be supporting the motions that are before us. I don't, you know, we've got several councillors running for higher office, and everybody's trying to be all things to all people, and to me, if you want to be, if you want to support everything, you really stand for nothing, and I have a problem with that. Again, I don't think it's, it's an issue that needs fixing. I don't wear my morality on my sleeves, I try to live by what I should, how I should live. And I'm really, in the final analysis, what we're being asked to do, and what bothers me now, we have voted on this, it was defeated, I know, we had a couple of votes relating to this, it was defeated, which reminds me of the, of the Washington Victoria Park, we're going to keep voting on it until we get the right, we get the answers we all want to hear. I, we'll close by saying that I, again, I, and I've answered to many people, our flag is the Canadian flag, basically, and that's the flag that we fly in our municipal flag polls. The question, if I might just ask, I was surprised to see a big new policy recommendation or policy coming forward from staff. I wondered who had asked for that and why, why that was here.
It did not come from staff.
That whole policy, those papers, did not come from staff?
That's correct.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. councillor Janetski?
Thank you. Just as a follow-up to councillor Gazola's question right there, if it didn't come from staff, where did it come from?
It came from councillor Urbanovich.
I'm going to be, I don't have any other questions, I'm going to be commenting on both motions, because to me, they're all blended together, and I think that although they're sort of different in their own component, I can understand where each of the councillors are coming from, but to me, it's still, it's one issue that, with the different parts to it. Interesting to note that we did get, all of us got a whole bunch of emails from the one group over the past week or two of asking us to reconsider this whole matter and change our vote, but it's interesting to note that it was the only group I ever heard from, and no other groups have approached me, or called me, or sent any emails having any concern. There's only the one group that has been here, that has expressed a concern. I have also received a number of phone calls at home, as well as people that I've met in the neighbourhood, or shopping, or wherever, who have come to talk to me just individually and expressed their comments on this issue, and indicated that they supported the council's action back two weeks ago, and just leave it as is and don't make any changes. What's the problem? We have right now a Canadian flag that represents everybody in Canada. We also have a provincial flag that represents everybody in the province, and we have a Kitchener flag that represents everybody in Kitchener. So those three flags, in their own way, speak for every citizen in particular jurisdiction that they represent. I should mention, I do have a family member who is gay as well, and he has not expressed any concern in terms of not flying the flag, and goes about his business in his own private way, but doesn't flaunt it like some people like to do. The policy that we have, in my opinion, is not broken, it's sound, and it should continue on. We also have had legal advice that has been given to us, and I've considered it strongly, and considered it in context to where the two motions that are before us this evening, and having weighed both of them, I think the legal advice is stronger, in my opinion. And as a result of these comments of mine, I'm not going to be supporting either of the motions.
councillor Galilee Seelak?
I had a bunch of comments that I just wrote down, but I have to say that I am appalled by your comment, councillor Janetski, about people choosing to flaunt it. That is not an okay comment to make. People choose to live the life the way they want, and I'm appalled at that comment. Now to my comments. I have been disheartened over the way that this has gone over the last two weeks. There's been a lot of misinformation and a lot of ignorance to this topic. I need to clarify, no action was taken two weeks ago, other than to vote down one motion. We did not vote to support the status quo. We just didn't take any action two weeks ago. And my comments at that time were that I couldn't support the current wording of the motion, because we needed to get it right, and doing it on the fly wasn't going to get us the right solution. We've taken two weeks' time, with a lot of hard work, by a couple of members around this table, me not being one of them. I believe that we have the right mix here for the overall policy, and not just concerning the Rainbow Flag. It was very disheartening over the last two weeks to receive some attacking and accusatory I always appreciate hearing from the community. However, when you don't understand what happened at the committee meeting, it's very hard for me to take into consideration some of the emails that we got. One in particular, that I will not mention the person's name, but went as far as to question this member, these members of council, whether or not we would support our child if they chose to be gay. That bothers me. I hear your rationale, I hear your passion that you want to see the Rainbow Flag flown. I understand that, and I've understood that since day one. Having said all that, I am supportive of the direction that we're heading. I believe it takes us into the current times and in the right direction for this current time. We can always change, review, revamp, or completely change the policy at a later date, but I think at this time, this is the right action to move forward with. And I've spoken for both motions, Mayor Zare.
Going to first speakers, first councillor Fernandez.
Thank you. There's been a lot of passion, both on both sides of this issue, for the last couple of weeks, and I think that there's a lot of information that has been shared, both positive and negative. When I listened at committee a couple of weeks ago, my comment at that time was that the Canadian flag flies for all of us, and that was because I heard that from somebody who was a new Canadian, had undergone some very serious challenges in their lives. In reviewing the motions that are before me today, I feel that there is a compromise here, but I also think it's gone just a little bit too far. I'm afraid that we're going to be struggling and challenged with a variety of groups that will be asking to fly different flags, and that will concern me, and it does concern me, how that, how we are going to deal with that. I think it's wonderful that members of council have come together and worked on this. I think it really shows leadership, and it shows the ability to put aside differences or different ways of doing things, and I absolutely congratulate councillors who have done that. I will be supporting the motion, but specifically the motion for the community flag at Speaker's Corners. I'm feeling a little uncomfortable at this time about the Duke Street Gardens flag poll. I think that there are many good positive wherethes and points to be considered in these motions, but I think a community flag poll at Speaker's Corners is a location that can be visible and respected for everybody whose flag that we fly there. I hope that this will be brought forward in the media, with both sides of the story being told. I think it's crucially important, and there may actually be, have to be, some healing. I think there have been a lot of things that have been said over the last couple of weeks. We're all human, we all make comments, and sometimes we make comments from our gut without really thinking about it, and that comes from both sides of the table here. So I hope that we can all move forward, and that this will be a positive motion to bring our community together, no matter what colour, stripe, religion, creed, colour, whatever you are. We are trying to be an inclusive community, and I think it's very important that we are taking these steps.
councillor Ionidas?
Through you, Mayor Zare. For me, it's never been about one group, for me, it's always been about the entire community. And what has been transpired over the last two weeks, that's what we're elected for. That's what, that's what we're here, to hear your concerns. So my only concern is I just, I wouldn't want to, I just want to move forward, and I think the hard work done by councillor Urbanovich and councillor Dan Glenn-Graham, and there's been a lot of work done on this, and this is what's going to move us forward, and that's why I'll support the motion, and along with councillor Etherington's input as well. I think that's what we need to look, we need to look forward and not look back anymore. And as far as for motion number two, I do have a slight amendment when that time comes.
Okay, I have one last speaker, are there any others, plus myself? councillor Urbanovich?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to, from a point of information, and, well, there's two, and one, I'll wait until we get to the second issue, but I did ask the clerk in terms of, do we get requests for flags or proclamations? And it's my understanding that your office receives, has received numerous requests for proclamations over the years, from everyone, like the Girl Guides, sorry, the Girl Guides and Scouts, United Nations World Refugee Day, the Lupus Foundation, and so on, and we've had to say no to those folks. I know that, it's my understanding that recently, we've had a request to fly the Eritrean flag. So it's not that these requests haven't come into our offices, they have, and we haven't been able to respond... into our offices, they have, and we haven't been able to respond to them in a way that's positive, quite frankly.
You had two words, sir. You said proclamations and flags. Which did you mean?
On the issue of, the first list that I talked about were proclamations, but some of those are organizations that also have flags. The Eritrean one was just about a flag.
In fact, it came to me last week, late, and it's pending the decision this evening as well. Mr. Clerk, do you want to add something to that, respond to his question?
It wasn't a question, it was just a point of information.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I'd like to make some comments before we vote on number one. As Counselor Galway Seelock commented, and I'll use this probably a different word, I am really, really saddened, and quite upset, by the tone and the way this was taken. I don't know how many times I spoke a number of weeks ago, that this is not about the rainbow flag. It was about a policy which said, "No flags, period." And regrettably, it took a turn that was divisive, and it didn't have to be. And I say it again tonight, it is not about the rainbow flag. The earlier delegation tonight, and others who have said it in emails, I take very great exception, and I'm upset with that by the action or inaction that we took a number of weeks ago, was a statement by this city, and it certainly wasn't the statement by this city, and particularly by me, that I did not support anti-sexist policies. It is absolutely ludicrous to come to that kind of conclusion, sir, because no one was even thinking that, and that has now become an issue. It's craziness. I am mayor of the city. I have a duty to respond and act according to the policies which this council has set. When it came up, I said, "If you're going to make a change, then make the change in the policy, but until such time, we will maintain the policy," hence what we are doing this evening. I can support the recommendations that are in front of us, and I will support both locations, for reasons I'll give in just a moment. And in doing that, and speaking to the second motion in particular, which was part of the conditions that are put into the policy, is that it has tightened it down. It is essentially the same that is in our advertising policies, which will not allow any discrimination, or negativity, or those things which are divisive in our community. That is a progressive way of going about it. I have a challenge to the media, actually, tonight. I don't expect that they will follow through.
Give us some credit, Carl, come on.
And the first challenge is not to speak up in a council chamber. The second challenge is, do not talk about the rainbow flag, or any other particular country flag, or anything else, when you're dealing with this issue, because part of the issue has been, and through social media mainly, that it took on this twist. And we are changing the policy to be an inclusive policy for all people. And that is the issue. It is not about a particular flag. As others have said, I personally never had an issue with flying the flag, the rainbow flag. So it never was that. And I hope that is fully understood by those who are here tonight, those who may be watching, and those who will read stories in the paper, or listen to the electronic media. So I will be supporting both resolutions. We will take the first motion now, and the first operative clause, because that is really what we're voting on. We will deal with that clause first, and it will be separated with the two locations. Personally, I feel that it is legitimate to have both, both from a historical standpoint, and from the potential conflicts that may arise, duplication of need on any particular week or day. So I'm going to first take the motion for the Duke Street Gardens site, Duke and Young, and a recorded vote has been called for. The second vote will be for the Speaker's Corners site. You can now vote. Opposed? That motion is carried. Now, for the Speaker's Corners site, recorded vote has been called Those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. The balance of the report, then, of the clause, the motion number one, recorded vote again, just be consistent. You may now vote. Those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We'll now go to motion number two. Counselor Banovich.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I'll just focus on the operative phrases, and it's moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Etherington. First of all, that the draft, flag raising, and flag protocol policy, we place our existing one subject to review by the city solicitor for final wording, and the appropriate implementing bylaw coming forward to June 30th, and that the draft be approved in principle. Two, that the implementation of the proposed policy reside with the city clerk or designate. Three, that community groups be permitted to raise a flag at no cost to them through a key sign-out or other process, and subject to conditions determined by the clerk. Four, that any groups requesting additional support, including sound equipment, road closures, et cetera, deal with special events and the appropriate fees associated with that. And finally, that in keeping with the above, changes, notwithstanding the provisions within our current policy, community groups which meet the general provisions of the proposed policy, be permitted to request the use of the Duke Street Gardens flagpole between now and when we'll finally deal with this on June 30th. And if I can speak to this, Mr. Mayor?
It's seconded by Counselor Etherington.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you. And I recognize that the format that's before us is somewhat unconventional, but I thought, in light of the issues and concerns that we had around this issue, it was important to put into wording as much as possible, so that there was clarity around what all of the intent was, recognizing that staff in the coming month and a bit will have an opportunity to make adjustments and tweak it. The general principles behind this are that it was built based upon the City of Markham bylaw, which I understand that AMO has referred to as one of the best-practice bylaws in terms of this. There's others that have been passed since then that had some other components, and I tried to capture those, as well as our existing policies, in terms of the proposal that's before us. I'm glad, Mr. Mayor, that you referenced our advertising policy, because in fact, on page two of eight, under general principles of the policy, it uses that exact wording to talk about the things that we wouldn't take advertising for. Those same principles are being applied here, in terms of what we wouldn't take a flag for. So, for example, anything that condones personal discrimination, anything that talks about inciting hatred or violence, and so on, and so on. And that exact same wording that is in our advertising policy is being reflected here. In terms of the civic square flag display, as I said, the only thing that's being proposed here is that we add what our existing practices around when we have a visit of the head of state to our community. And then finally, it gets into specific criteria around requests for flags, so any organization would have one opportunity a year, up to a week at a time. There would be the development of a calendar at the start of the year, and any additional request would come after that. There's a process for dealing with conflicts, if we end up going over and above the use of the two flagpoles. And then it also, I'll just point out, under the appendices, there was some minor adjustments to the times when we fly flags at half-mast, because in looking at some of these other bylaws, we were missing something. So, for example, the death of the regional chair, former regional chair, as well as some of the commemorations of solemn occasions, such as the National Day of Mourning for persons killed or injured in the workplace, the National Day of Remembrance for Violence Against Women, and so on. So I think this should give staff what they need. As I said, it's built upon the basis of the Markham one, and uses some of our own language, as well as some of the things that were included in Torontos, and Guelphs, and Ottawa's. I did look at a number of documents that the City of Toronto provided me with links to, including cities from across Canada, including Calgary, Edmonton, Regina, Ottawa, Winnipeg, Vaughan, Richmond Hill, Markham, and others, in terms of looking at this. And there's a lot of consistency around the core principles for many of Canada's large cities that have implemented this. I think, in closing, the only other comment that I want to make is I too need to respond to, unfortunately, some of the language that was used in the earlier debate. It is, it wasn't appropriate, and I'm glad that Counselor Galway Seelock raised it. For me, this really is about values, and I'm very clear on the values that I stand up for, and those are values of inclusivity and diversity. Those are values that I've always been taught to respect since I was a young child, and I will continue to respect those. And whether we're talking about a flag of a nation, or a flag of an organization, or the rainbow flag, it's all about celebrating the things that make this a great community. That's what it's all about, and I don't think, you know, we should shy away from that, or hide from that. We need to protect ourselves from the problems that we were all concerned about, and I think we can do that. And if I may, Mr. Mayor, I just want to ask staff one question, as a follow-up to Counselor Davies' questions of legal staff, and that question would specifically be, is it safe to assume that the legal advice you provided us around the advertising policy, and the language that protects us on that, can protect us in this issue as well? That the same legal advice would apply?
Again, putting me in an awkward position, it would be really giving you legal advice in a public forum, so I'm not suggesting I can do that, and in fact, I don't think I can answer your question in public.
Okay, Mr. Wilmer wants to respond.
This won't be legal advice, obviously. There is a distinction from a staff perspective on the advertising policy versus the flag policy, and which is this, that in the advertising policy, if we say no to a particular group because of reasons set out in the policy, they can seek advertising opportunities elsewhere. But with the flag policy, if we say no to a group, that this municipality will not fly their flag, this is the municipality. They can't go to another alternative to the City of Kitchener, in the City of Kitchener.
Well, I'm not going to get into a debate with you on it. I don't agree with that, but anyway, we'll just leave it be. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would hope that we can support this, because it does give us the basis around the implementation of the bylaws, or the motion that we just passed, and staff will bring us final wording on the 30th.
Okay, I'm going to go to Counselor Ionidas next, because he indicated that he had an amendment, and I'd like to get that, give us an idea of what it is, do not move it at this point in time, so which we can allow full discussion.
Well, I have it written, just adjusted to it, if the clerk wants to put it up afterwards, but it's in bold. And basically, what I'm asking is just one little slight change in the motion, and that is to, that be it further resolved, that the community groups be permitted to raise a flag at no cost to them through a key sign-out, et cetera, and subject to an implementation of a detailed application or other. And if I can just quickly speak to that.
Okay.
And the reason why I'm putting this forward is, I think it's, I think an application process that is detailed will alleviate some of staff's time, and really, these issues that we're looking at, they're really not within our jurisdiction. So I don't think it's appropriate for staff to be researching these community groups and seeing whether or not they're acceptable or not. I think it's more appropriate that these community groups come up with whatever the detailed application is, to fill out the application, and then staff can just verify whether or not they're acceptable or not. And so I think that's the way I look at it, and I think it's up to the community groups, too, if they really want to see a flag thrown up, that they should put in some work into seeing their flag flown. And also, I think this little extra addition of protection in there will weed out any of those organizations that may have some different ulterior motives.
Okay. I probably would have been covered, but there's certainly no harm in including that. So I'll come back before we take the motion, the main motion, and deal with the amendment at that time. Counselor Glenn Graham.
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. And first of all, this was dealt with at committee, not at council, so this motion was not refused at council. I think that's an important distinction. I appreciate the legal advice we've been given. That's the job that our legal department is hired to do, and I think they always do a fine job of it. We, as a council, have to make a determination about the amount of risk we're willing to take, and the values that we want to portray for this city, and the kind of city we want. And this is our opportunity, and we always say the buck stops with us. And so if we're making a stand, I'm not judging anyone that doesn't agree with me, and I think that this is an opportunity for us to say, this is the kind of city we want, and that's what I'm standing up to do today. And I think it's unfortunate, there has been some negative comments, and certainly the comment that Counselor Galway Seelock referenced was very unfortunate, because certainly, anyone who is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, or queer does not make a choice, nor does a child make a choice to be that way. So to suggest that is very inappropriate as well. I think that this is bigger, certainly as Mayor Zare has said, than the rainbow flag. This is bigger than all of that, because it's about the kind of city that we want to demonstrate that we are. We are one of the most religiously diverse, we are one of the most ethnically diverse, and I'm very proud of that, that having moved here from Toronto 25 years ago, I find that there's much more diversity here than I found in Toronto even. And yes, there's controversy. Sometimes in life, you have certain groups that will have a request for a flag, different United Nations countries, and that's perhaps what led to the previous policy 20 years ago. As someone who does mediation for a living, I believe that there's an opportunity to sit down with groups that have diversity of opinions, and even to reconcile those, and help them understand, because when you move to this country, you don't bring violence here, you bring the willing- move to this country, you don't bring violence here, you bring the willingness to sit down and have freedom of speech, and the opportunity for freedom of expression. That's the beauty of our country, that's the beauty of our city. And I think that we're standing up for that today. It's nothing about an election, and I'm glad it's a nonpartisan movement as a result. This is about the kind of city we want. And I think that we're demonstrating, those that are speaking for it, that the values that we're portraying, and again, I respect those that disagree with me, because I think that they have legitimate concerns. But I think that we can say that we have, by this policy, and I appreciate all the hard work councillor Verbanovic has done researching Markham, has covered the basis to say that this is an acceptable level of risk, that the city will be not only on solid ground, but I think that we're, we should be proud of the ground we stand for. And this is a strong step forward for diversity and inclusiveness for our city.
Councillor Fernandez?
Just, excuse me, just one quick question, because we've got some pretty good details and really tight, a really tight policy here. Just not sure if this has been thought about or addressed. Damage to the flagpole, or to the flag, should something, I mean, if people are raising and lowering their own flag, it may be a real miniscule little issue, but I don't want to see somebody coming and saying, your flagpole ripped my flag, or something like that.
The intent is that the last words are two conditions determined by the city clerk, and that would pick that sort of thing up.
Okay. All right, then if that's covered, that's good.
Councillor Etherington?
Yeah, just one quick question, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Verbanovic. On this whole legal question, in his research, and I compliment him on all of the work he's put into it, in that research, did you find any cases where the legality of those policies were challenged, or successfully challenged?
Councillor Verbanovic?
In any of the work that I did, and again, I'm not a lawyer, so can't give legal advice, but any of the work that I did, or the people I spoke to from other cities, have not indicated any types of legal challenges in terms of their flag policy. You know, they've had to deal with balancing competing requests and things like that, but that's been the extent of it.
That's what I found. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, there are no more speakers. I'll just comment that I gave my comments earlier in general, that one item I did forget, and the reason that I can support this, because I did speak strongly for the policy last time, was, or rather is, because the criteria are tightened down, and it eliminates, in my view, a tremendous amount of the risk of being challenged. And I believe that with the minuscule level of risk that is there, I am prepared to live with that. So, recorded vote. We'll first of all deal with councillor Aynidas' amendment. It's been seconded by councillor Galloway-Seelock. Just by show of hands, perhaps, on the amendment, those in favor? Opposed? The amendment carries. So, now the amended motion in its entirety, recorded vote. You may now vote. Those in favor? Opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much for coming up this evening. Okay, we'll move to the last delegation, and it is Terry Ross. This is regarding tender number one, Roman numeral six, which is the tender for, get it here, road reconstruction of Kennedy Avenue and Palmer Avenue. Welcome, Mr. Ross.
Hi, good evening. I have copies of all the questions that I sent earlier to Steve Allen and John Seep. And that goes in part, if that can be handed out to the councillors, that'd be great, so they have reference to all the questions. So, we, as the neighbors, we accept the fact that 42 out of 44 of us were not listened to, weren't heard, and the sidewalks are going in. Now, what we're worried about is not having any input into how this is going to be done. We have eight mature trees on Palmer, and five apparently not suitable trees, called Ohio Buckeyes, on Kennedy Avenue. So, the email that you receive here, that was sent to Steve Allen, John Seep, and copied to Frank Etherington, because he's the councillor in my ward. And all these questions are individual address-based by the residents of these two streets, and that was on April 11th. On the same day, Steve Allen did reply, and said that he, John, and the arborist will look at each point, and stated that a sidewalk without a boulevard is to be avoided if feasible. It will be reviewed, and then I will be contacted. Well, I was contacted today, that's six weeks later, and there's no more new information. As well, if a full-size, one-and-a-half-meter sidewalk and a one-meter boulevard is installed, and Kennedy is shifted north by approximately one-third of a meter, that's, they're actually moving the road, and that's because the hydropoles are too close to the roadway. We will lose the Ohio Buckeye, and the parking spaces for the rentals, which some of them will lose three spots, and they are using them presently. So, now where are these residents, these tenants going to park? As well as the single-family homes, we are going to lose spots as well. We have offered solutions to all the issues. We've gone to other neighborhoods, Mill Street between Spadina and the railway tracks, north of Weaver on Sterling, Troy Streets, and the streets running north off Lancaster between Krug and Frederick, and found that some do not have boulevards, some sidewalks do not appear to be one-and-a-half meters, and some areas do not have any sidewalks installed, even though there are new roads and curbs at these locations. And to check this, I actually went on MapQuest, and was able to see photos that show the streets in disrepair in 2011. Presently, there's new roadway and new curbs, but the sidewalks were not installed. So, we're afraid that if this tender is accepted, there will be no more discussion on the designs as promised, and based on past meetings we have attended, we are disillusioned with City Hall and the majority of the councillors. Again, 42 out of 44 residents said, we do not want the sidewalks, and we weren't listened to. We residents have much to lose and very little to gain, and we suspect that there may be some other agenda there, and we'd really like full transparency on this. So, we ask that you seriously consider the outcome of this forest construction in our home neighborhood. Put yourselves in our position. We've been ruled against, but a truce is in place, and we need to have open negotiations and compromises to have some sense of honesty and integrity by all involved. Our solutions are easy to implement, and with the meeting that has just been set up today, John Seep contacted me, Steve Allen, and Frank will be meeting at my home on June 10th, but that is after the vote of this tender. That way, at my location, we can experience the actual atmosphere, check out what is there. There's only been a couple councillors that have come around to our neighborhood during all this, and has checked out. Physically, they come, and I know they have checked it out, because I've talked to them. And I thank you, especially the councillors who were not part of my ward. I thank you for your time, and I'm open to questions if you wish.
Thank you very much. There may be some questions, not so far. Yes. Councillor Janowski?
Yeah, thank you for coming in. The meeting that you're supposed to have with staff on June the 10th, what do you think will be accomplished, notwithstanding how the vote may go here? Will it be of any benefit or not, as you would see it?
I think it will be a benefit, because if you look at our area, if, for instance, on Kennedy Avenue, where the Buck, on Ohio Buckeyes are, if they do not shift the road one foot, and keep the sidewalk curbside, and possibly even reduce them at these locations to one meter, the trees will all be saved. I've actually gone out and measured to confirm this. The road doesn't have to be shifted that one foot, because of the hydropole the entire length. You can just build a curb out, that foot extra around that post. We now have designated parking, and we also have traffic calming. And we can also go as far as make the road one-way downhill. Then there's no concerns. That's just one of the examples.
Have you shown this list to Steve Allen and engineering staff?
That was emailed to him, and that is the list that, he only replied that, quoting from his reply, that he, John Seep, and the arborist will look at each point, and a sidewalk without a boulevard is to be avoided if feasible. So, I get from that, he wants the boulevard put in place. That's another one full meter of wasted space. And the argument's been in the past that they have to have a place to put snow. They don't plow to the curb now. And if they do plow to the curb, no problem. A number of us have snow blowers, a number of the people in the neighborhood, actually, we're a neighborhood. The retired guys on these days come out in their large snow blowers, or their riding blowers, and they clear everybody's area. We don't have that concern. The concern with sidewalks originally is for the senior people, who do not have this available to them, they will now have to take care of all this area, and that's not fair to them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Fernandez?
Sorry, thank you, yes. Terry, I just want to make sure I'm understanding very clearly, what you're saying is, if a sidewalk is going to be put in place, that you're asking for a curbside sidewalk with no boulevard? And then, a one-meter sidewalk, is that what I'm understanding? Or less than? Sorry, there's lots of numbers in here, so.
Yes, a one-meter sidewalk where feasible. Some areas, it wouldn't need it. But other areas, especially by the Ohio Buckeye, will need it. And on Palmer Ave, where there's eight mature trees, the smaller the sidewalk, the better, because at present, with the photos I supplied last time I was here, the sidewalk will literally be against the tree, if it's one-and-a-half meters. Those are eight mature trees that could possibly, we could lose. And that's not acceptable.
And I just want to make sure that I'm very clear, because on the opposite side of the street, there is a sidewalk.
Correct.
On both Kennedy and Palmer.
That is correct.
Okay. And that is, would you say, a traditional sidewalk that you would see pretty much anywhere in the neighborhood, up at Cortland, or any of the other streets that are?
Yeah, they're one-and-a-half meters on our street, I did measure them. Some people have not taken care of the grass overgrowth, so it does become a little bit smaller. But on places like Mill Street, between Spadina and the railway tracks, they had to compromise there. Those sidewalks do not appear to be one-and-a-half meters, they appear to only be one meter.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Davies?
Thank you, just wanted to, thank you for coming in. I just wanted to confirm a couple of things. And have you spoken to, because I remember this, the issue of the curb-facing sidewalks came up briefly, and we were talking about this before. But have you spoken to all of the potentially affected residents that, on the curb face?
Yes, and that's why each one of the questions was based on each individual address.
Okay. And I guess the next question would be then, you have a meeting on June 10th, you said?
That's correct. That was set up today between John Seep and I by email.
Okay, very good. So, you're not really, you're asked today is that, essentially, that staff work with you. So, no formal changes to the, I just want to make sure I'm understanding the ask. The ask is, you're informing council that you want staff to work with you to potentially change the curb face?
Yeah, I want...
And these items here, obviously.
Yeah, I'm, like, we're afraid that because the past, we weren't, we weren't heard. We're afraid that if this tender goes forward, we're not going to be heard again, and we're just going to get something imposed on us that we really don't want. But we've resided in the fact that we accept the decision of council, even though we don't like it, we respect your decision. However, we would like some guarantee that we can compromise on the size and the design. And by John, and Steve, and Frank coming out on the June 10th, it will be seen. And if anybody else wants to come out that day, that's great. I will be home, because my employment's ending at the end of this month, and I'm going to have a lot of free time on my hands.
Okay, thank you. One question of staff as well, if I could, maybe.
Okay, we'll come back to you. Councillor, sorry, Ms. Houston, you just clicked in. Do you have some information you want to add now?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I can add it now, or I can add it later, but might as well do it now. We can certainly consider some things in terms of curb-faced sidewalk, we're looking at that to protect some of the mature trees in any event. And we can look at narrowing a little bit of the sidewalk in other areas. So, there is some tweaking that can be done. We do try to avoid as much curb-facing sidewalk as much as possible, because of the snow-clearing issues that the delegate also mentioned. So, we may not want to do a curb-faced sidewalk along the whole piece, it may be just in the areas where we need to protect mature trees. But we're certainly open to having those discussions, and that was the reason for staff responding to the delegate of setting up a meeting.
Okay. I'll go back to the speakers list. Councillor Etherington?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Terry. Terry, these trees, how old are the trees?
The Ohio Buckeyes, I think, are about 10 to 12 years old. But the other mature trees on Palmer, I'm going to guess in the 50 to 60 range, because I can't put my arms halfway around some of these trees.
Yeah, I've seen them, they're beautiful trees. Could you tell me, are there areas close to you at Kennedy Palmer, areas in, roads in that area that have absolutely no sidewalks?
Mill Street, between Ottawa and Cortland, right where there's going to be a new LRT station, there are none. Troy Avenue, now Troy runs between Krug and, I think it's called Pandora, it's close to the Pandora side, and that is the section that has the new road, curbs, and no sidewalk.
Just want to make sure we don't get into a debate, again, on sidewalk or no sidewalk. The decision has been made, there are going to be sidewalks. So, I'm not sure if that's where you're going, councillor Etherington. It's just massaging the how and where the sidewalk can go. That's the essence of the discussion tonight.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Could I ask you one, you one question of advice on, can we reject a tender?
Absolutely, you can reject a tender.
Thank you.
With the consequences of rejecting it, and the work not getting done, yeah.
Right.
Councillor Singh?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have questions of staff. Does councillor Davies, if he asks his question, answers mine, or, oh, she didn't, okay. So, I have questions of staff when it's appropriate.
Okay, for the delegation, councillor Gazola? Is yours question with the delegation?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I, from what I'm, I'm trying to totally understand, from what I'm understanding, you're prepared to compromise with where the city seems to be going now. But would you be adverse to the fact that if there was a way that sidewalks were not put there, would you be adverse to that fact?
No. If there was none, that would be perfect.
That's what your group originally wanted, right?
That's originally...
That's what the community wanted.
Yeah, 42 out of 44 of us did not want it originally, but we respect the decision of council.
Thank you.
Okay, those are all the questions for you, Mr. Ross, thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Councillors? Counselors Singh, your question of staff?
Yes, thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Gordon, uh, the question similar to what Counselor, uh, Etherington just raised, uh, what could be the recourse if this tender were to be declined, other than obviously, so two questions versus that one. And the second is, um, if this tender were to be approved, um, can design be, um, design changes be made after the fact, or would there have to be reissuance of a tender?
Mr. Gordon?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, on the first question, uh, to, to reject this...
Ramifications of...
The ramifications of a rejection of the tender is the fact that all the bidders now have each other's pricing and, uh, it's putting the low bidder at a bit of a disadvantage in the fact that they did bid it according to our requirements. And now we're going to be rebidding and everybody else back in the game again, unless there's significant changes to it.
Okay, all right, that helps. And if we were to approve the tender, but obviously staff are still in the process of engaging the neighborhood with still input and, so if there are slight design changes, does that overly change the tender the way it's approved? Are there some cost savings then would be passed back down or cost increases then it would have to come back? Like, what, what would transpire?
We have the option of, of negotiating with that low bidder if there are changes to be made. We have unit costs for, for most of the items in there that if the decision were made to have no sidewalks, that those costs could be removed.
And there are certain contingencies built into the, the, the tender generally as well. And on top, I'm guessing the sidewalks are a very small component of the overall project.
I don't have that sidewalk number at, at my fingertips.
Okay, all right, thank you.
It would be on my understanding, any changes, and they can be made and have been made, and usually on all tenders, on all contracts, they're simply a, a change order to the contract. Usually when it's found on, on site, changes need to be made. Counselor Fernandez?
Um, I actually have a motion to make, um, if it...
Okay, are there any other questions of staff? Okay, we have the tender in front of us and, uh, Counselor Fernandez?
Yes, um, in light of the fact that the residents and staff and the ward council will be meeting on the 10th of June, I would like to defer this tender until June the 16th, which shouldn't, if I'm not mistaken from the information Mr. Gordon just gave, shouldn't put the tender at complete risk because we're not denying the tender, we're just putting it on hold.
Let's just clarify that, um, there, there are two options, you're right. One would be to de, uh, well, there are three, just defeat the, uh, the tender, but you run those risks that Counselor, Mr. Gordon just talked about. Uh, one would be to defer, uh, pending that, that discussion. Or thirdly, um, approve the tender with direction to staff to make modifications, uh, on site in, in consultation with the, the residents. So those would be the three that I would see. You're choosing to, to the second one. I would ask then, Mr. Gordon, the, um, any risks between now and the, the 16th, which is, uh, three weeks? So it's, I don't know how long the tender has been out and how good it is valid for.
The, the, we have, uh, sixty days from the time that the tender closes to make that award, so we're, we're okay with that part.
And, okay, and when did it close? Well, we're well within that period of time. Okay, so back to you then, Counselor Fernandez?
That's right, so, um, I, I think just, because I think it's important that, um, an onsite visit is done. Uh, I think this will at least give some more information to us. Uh, I, I don't want to turn down the tender at this time. I think a deferral might be respectful of the whole process and, um, and then we can move forward on the 16th, whichever way we want to.
Okay, Counselor Brabich?
Well, just a question of staff on the timing issue, um, because I heard Mr. Gordon say, I heard Mr. Gordon say that, um, even if we pass the tender, that, um, there could still be clarity on, on all the issues that the delegation spoke about, um, without, without any delays. And so I guess my question to Ms. Houston in the absence of anyone else from engineering, um, being here, would be, um, would a deferral to June 16th create any, um, problems for you in terms of, um, in, in terms of the project moving forward in a timely manner? Or are we better off to, to approve this, uh, with the understanding that all these other issues are going to still be worked through between the neighborhood, um, and, uh, and any, any final implementation of the contract?
Ms. Houston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff's preference would be that you award the tender and if you would like us to report back to you on the resolution of, of the meeting with the residents, we can certainly do that. And you can provide further direction in terms of change order requirements at that point if necessary. That way that will allow us to proceed with the contracts and get the process started.
So, so in light of that, Mr. Mayor, I won't be supporting the deferral. I think everything that the delegation has asked for can be achieved without, um, jeopardizing the, the timing of the contract going forward.
Counselor Davy?
And, sorry, just to clarify again, Ms. Houston, so, or, Mr. Gordon, I'm not sure. Everything including if we can approve the tender, but still everything including removal of the sidewalk, which to be clear, I don't support, but everything including that could occur even with, if we approve the tender, is that correct?
Mr. Gordon?
Yes, we can negotiate those changes into the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Glenn Gray?
Thank you very much. That was going to be my question. My understanding was that the sidewalk, the only way to defeat, to remove the sidewalk was to, uh, to defeat the tender, but you're saying, Mr. Gordon, that we could vote for the tender and still remove the sidewalk. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, um, say that again. Uh, I, I perhaps wasn't concentrating when you were, were speaking and I think that clerk is commenting on your, your comment, so, uh, Mr. Clerk?
Um, through you, Mayor Zaire. Uh, on March 3rd, council undertook a vote to remove the sidewalks and, uh, that vote was lost. Subsequently, on March 31st, council did undertake a motion to reconsider. Uh, the motion from March 3rd, uh, that motion reconsider also lost. Uh, in accordance to council procedural by law, council's only permitted to reconsider a matter once within its term.
Yes, that's, we had alluded to that earlier on, and so going back to Counselor Davy's question, the, uh, we can certainly change the tender but not remove the sidewalks. That would take the reconsideration issue. Clear on that? Counselor Glenn Gray?
So that's, that's why I was asking about voting against the tender. If, if that was done, then that's a different vote, uh, Mr. Clerk, is that not true? That if the, the tender was then recast, uh, it, then it could potentially have the implications, uh, the effect of removing the sidewalk with, with a vote just on the tender? Is that not true?
Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mayor Zaire. Um, the vote would still, in essence, be to, uh, remove the sidewalk and that's a matter that council has already considered and, uh, as well as subsequently reconsidered. So it would take a determination by, uh, by the chair as to whether or not any subsequent motions are substantially different enough from those previous motions as to be deemed a new or separate motion.
I, I think that it's, it's clear, sidewalks are in or out and we've dealt with that on two occasions. So at this point in time, they're in. And, uh, we, if we approve the tender, we can make the amendments to the, the tender as we normally would anyway, for the changes that could be negotiated on the 10th of June. That's the way I see it. There are two other speakers. Counselor Gisola?
Yeah, I'm still not clear on, on where we're going because I really believe that the community, the neighborhood did not want the sidewalks. Unfortunately, when that vote first came to council, I, I was out of the country and, and, and wasn't able to participate in that. That's my problem. Also, though, Counselor Brab, uh, Counselor Yenetski was, was not at that meeting. I, I really feel that, that, uh, there is a desire, I know there's a desire of the neighborhood not to have sidewalks and they're, they're most affected, but I, I still feel that there's a desire from this council not to include the sidewalks. So how is that, is it, is that possible? Is that, is the only way that that's possible by, by completely rejecting the tender? And if that's the case, what, what are all the ramifications of completely rejecting the tender?
Well, from my layman's and, and experience, you reject the tender, the, uh, the project would either not be done this year and then come forward another time, or immediately, um, recast the, the specs and go out once more to tender. However, as Mr. Gordon has said, and I think you, Counselor Gisola, should know above all else, that, uh, that then prejudices getting, uh, the, the tender results, uh, that are fair because all of the, those figures are known by all of the competitors at this point in time.
I appreciate, I appreciate that.
We prejudice the, the tendering process.
That's right, so I don't think that's a proper avenue to go. Uh, could I, could I ask staff, then, what, what would be the, the downfall if this project were not done this year but done in a future year?
I bet I can't answer, obviously.
But staff can answer.
Ms. Houston?
What the overall impact of the workload is, I can't respond to tonight. I could certainly find out from staff on that. Um, it's obviously a, a major project that we're planning for, for this season, so it will have an impact.
But it's hard to know. It may have an impact that you're, you may be able to shift to other areas. So without really knowing all of that, perhaps, perhaps a deferral is in order at this point.
Well, I, I would say that, um, I don't know the work plan either, but that would mean that they would have to have another work, another project that has been completed up to this point in time in order to replace it, which is probably unlikely.
Or do, just keep the money in the pot.
Right.
And then if you do that, we're, we'll have a new council here and maybe, uh, fresh minds could...
We're here to make decisions and we have responsibilities today. I would suggest it is us that picks that decision. I have two other speakers. Counselor Etherington?
It's, uh, a point of clarification, I guess, Mr. Mayor. If I got it straight, what you're saying, or what you seem to be saying is that no matter what happens at our June the 10th meeting, we cannot at that point, because it's been reconsidered and dealt with several times, we cannot take out the sidewalks.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And I missed a point of clarification that was asked for, one would go by Counselor Davy. Do you still wish to have that? Okay. Uh, Counselor Singh?
Oh, sorry, I, I had the same question. I just wanted to reconfirm. I had my understanding as Counselor Etherington and, so, that's been clear now.
Yeah. So to summarize, um, any, uh, attempt to remove the sidewalks at this time would take a reconsider, a reconsideration motion, which would obviously be a notice of motion as well. And then potentially...
Reconsider?
That's right, I beg, I beg your pardon, I'm, I'm confusing myself now. It will not be reconsidered, period.
This year?
That's correct. So there is a motion, I don't know if it was to defer to this, to the 16th, I do not know if it had a second. Counselor Yenetski?
Second.
Is seconding the motion to defer to, uh, to June the 16th. Uh, I will not be supporting it for all of the reasons I've just stated. I think we opened a real can of worms. There's an opportunity to deal with all of the issues that the, uh, the residents are still asking us to, to negotiate with them. Counselor Gisola?
If, I have a question, if, uh, referral motion is lost, we still have to vote on whether we go ahead with the tender?
That's correct.
So that's another vote?
That's correct.
Could be another vote.
Correct. The, uh, motion for deferral to June the 16th, recorded vote has been called for. The, those in favor of deferral? Those opposed? The motion of deferral carries. We'll deal now with the rest of the tenders. Sarah Mover? Move by Counselor Davy, seconded by Counselor Gisola. Any discussion on the tenders? Going once. Counselor Gisola?
I want to start out with the, the first one.
We'll deal with them one at a time.
Yeah. I, I, I understand what it's all about, I'm not, I'm not sure I completely understand what we're doing. I'm really concerned about the, the fact that the costs have increased sixty percent from the previous contract. Uh, I have sort of two questions. What, what exactly are we doing here? And, uh, when costs go up by sixty percent, should we not perhaps be taking a second look at reconsidering the, the whole issue?
Ms. Houston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's several components, um, to this program. First off, this is, was a new program in 2012, so this is just the second time we're issuing a contract on it. Um, so the first go-around, um, the pricing was best on, on what was, was known at that time. Um, I think the contract, it was the same contractor that was awarded last time. And I think what the contractor found out in part of that process is the requirements that we had for the job was significantly different than the way they had estimated the job. So that's, um, much of the increase in the price. Also, this is, um, the part of it that's in the report you can see is reactionary-type process, so they have to respond to issues that residents, uh, bring to our attention. So that means they have to pull their, their work crews off of, of planned work and respond within a certain amount of time, um, to these emergency responses. So obviously that does take some extra time to do and they've built that cost in. So those are some of the reasons why the cost went up, um, so much. And, um, there's only a few contractors that are in this business. I think there's two in total. And, um, the other one already had enough work, I think, and was the reason why they didn't bid on this particular one.
What exactly are they doing for this half a million dollars? I, I don't under, I don't understand. I understand the problem and, and ran into a situation just recently where this came to light, but what, what is this firm doing for half a million dollars? I, I know that from, from what I understand where they, they have to, they have to check before a plumber, for example, can work on sewer lines and somebody has to come over. Is this what they do?
Yes.
Ms. Houston?
Yes.
But how do we, and, and, so, is that basically what they're doing? Every time there's a, 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 a dig to take place, uh, they're coming, or i- is this just when there's been an accident?
If there, if there's a clogged, um, sewer line and there's a requirement for, um, the line to be checked to see if there is a, a crossbar situation, um, that, that's a response piece. to see if there is a crossbar situation, that's a response piece of the program. And the report also speaks to the other piece, that's a pre-installment survey, that's more of an assessment process, and that's a proactive approach.
So we're going to have to pay a half a million dollars for a year for them to come and check when there's a problem with sewer lines? Like, for example, 2012, it started. In 2013, how many incidences did we have of this sort of thing?
That's certainly information we can provide. I don't have that offhand. The tender would have been spec based on an estimate of what work we actually expect to receive, but the actual price would be based on the actual work that we contract out as opposed to...
So even though the figure here says 541,000, we're really just settling to a price per occasion, is that right?
That's correct.
And you're expecting X numbers of occasions?
A certain volume.
Okay. Okay, I understand. Is there any way of getting around all of this? Is this something we can do in-house, or...
It's not. It is a new program, so it's not something we have done in-house in the past. It also requires specialized equipment, which in the past we've considered to be fairly costly to have in-house to do that way. We can look at it again to see if that's changed over the last number of years, but it has been too costly in the past.
So we're going to have to do this every year from here on in?
That's correct.
And I can appreciate the necessity, I can now appreciate the necessity for it, but now who is ultimately paying for that? Is that the utility users?
The utility users.
Yeah, so it doesn't affect the tax rate, it affects the utility customers.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Fernandez?
Thank you. Just continued, sort of delving in the same line of as Councilor Gazola. So this is kind of like a reserve fund, right? We've set the money aside, and we may have 10 incidences that we need to use the money out of it, and it just gets paid as we do this particular service.
Ms. Houston. It's not specifically a reserve fund.
It's not a reserve fund. It comes out of our operating budget, and it's an estimate of the amount of work that will be required. The actual, the risk assessment process piece of that is pre-planned, so that we have more certainty over, as opposed to the reactionary piece is more a best estimate kind of situation.
Okay, okay. So if we don't have as many, say we, last year we did 10, or maybe this, so based on the amount of money that we're paying out, if we don't use that service for as many times as we hope we will, will there be money left over, and where would that go?
Yes, there would be money left over, because we would only pay on a per-unit basis, and that would go back into the utility.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilor Yenetski?
Continuing on the same line of thinking as well, is this a one-year contract or a two-year contract?
Mr. Gordon.
It's a one-year contract with an option to renew for two additional years. Okay, okay, and I can appreciate that, yet when I look on page 1, 3, in the middle of the page, it talks about the budgets from 2014 and 2015, and that gives me the impression that it's a two-year contract. Or are we talking one-year contract with two extension years? This makes it three years.
Okay, I've got two. Mr. Chapman and Mr. Hagie, who wants to take this one? Okay, Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I draw your attention to the paragraph below the table. It says, "The contract is for 12 months and spans two calendar years. The 2014 and 2015 budget amounts above indicate a portion of operating budget relating to the program." So we're wording the contract partway through 2014, which is why there is part of the budget in 2014, the remainder of the budget in 2015.
Okay. Then the next question I have, also dealing on that page and the budget, it's got capital new services, $200,000. I don't understand, where does that money come from?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. From within the capital budget, there's a separate line identified for that purpose. As Ms. Houston indicated, there is a reactive component to the program and a new service component to the program. That's the budget that's funding the cost for new services.
Those three items would be separate lines in the capital budget.
Okay. I can understand the first two, but I was wondering where the third one, so that's the clarification I was looking for. And then the other question that Councilor Gazola had about 60% increase has been answered, so thank you.
Councilor Gazola, one more.
Yeah, just, I wanted to follow up on that. And this is a result of going to this trenchless digging. Is that right? I'm just curious about going ahead, how we get away from running into this problem? Is there a way of doing that? It's a result of putting gas pipes through sewer lines, so is there, from here on in, is there a way we can not run into that problem? And is it because of that trenchless method that we use?
Ms. Houston.
And this is a question, actually, you can bring back at another time.
I think perhaps that would be wise. Clearly, even if the answer would be yes, it won't happen now.
That's right. We still have to deal with this, yeah. Okay, that's fine.
So that would be wise to bring it back at another time? Okay, the second on that theme? Okay. Try to bunch these questions together, so we're not going back and forth.
I just got to thinking after, Councilor Gazola has mentioned, if we reject the 60% increase, what happens next?
You run the risk of...
That's right. I mean, there's that risk physically, but would this come back as another tender, or does it go for reconsideration?
There's no other way of dealing with it right now. There was one supplier.
And you've got to go with it.
That's right. Tender number two, the polyethylene pipe. Any questions? Number three, EAB. Councilor Singh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that probably the appropriate staff are not in council chambers today, but I'll look to Ms. Houston. So obviously, due to the harsher winter we had, there were a lot of speculations as well as articles that indicated that that may have had an impact to the infestation. Would that make any impact to the injection program, or have you investigated further what the result was after this winter?
Ms. Houston.
I believe in a previous report the staff did, they did comment about the winter, that it did not have an impact on the progress of the EAB, so it should not impact this tender or the results of wanting to do the injections.
Okay. And for the budget for this phase of work was 184, so there's an estimated surplus. When it states the budget for this phase of work was that the entirety of this program for injection, or just for this tender that we had specifically set aside 184, and we just luckily came much less?
It appears that it relates specifically to this particular tender, because the injections beyond that would be much higher than what's allowed here.
Okay. And so what would happen with the surplus?
It would stay in the main EAB account to be allocated for future works.
And this could be used towards other works as well, to expand the program?
Such as?
Well, we still have no budgeted items for replanting boulevard trees, so...
Right. It's a small amount, so it wouldn't be something that we'd specifically assign at this point in time.
Yeah, it all accumulates. I'm just saying, is it already earmarked for something else, or it will continue to sit in a fund, knowing that we actually have additional 86,000 for future works?
It will stay in the fund until we do the next tender on the program.
But you're saying this surplus was specific to this tender only? It's not to the general account altogether? The entirety of the work, it's for this tender only, right?
Right. But when we budget, we budget for the EAB program in its whole. We don't have a specific account just for the injections and just for the removals.
Okay, I can come back to that after.
It's part of the $4.6 billion, as is on page two there.
I think we'd still probably need more clarity, which I'll get from staff after, but what I was trying to get at is, is this a surplus newfound, or is this just expected to be kind of altogether in a bigger pot? It just will disappear because of other works that will happen?
Probably talking offline.
Yeah, exactly.
Councilor Gazola?
I just want to carry on with that, because it was clearly indicated in the report, in the excellent report the staff gave us last week, as to this. Originally, staff was estimating, I think, $250 a tree for injections, and this, as you'll notice the tenders coming in, works out to about $155 a tree, and hence, that's why we're having a bit of a surplus in that account. But that was clearly set out in the report. If you go to last week's community services report, it's clearly, and that's just one aspect of it, that, so it's not newfound money, it was expected, and they needed to carry on the rest of the program. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, Councilor Fernandez?
Yeah, just a question. Somebody had sent me an email regarding the triazian that we use. Do we, have we considered partnering with some of the other municipalities that are buying the same chemical, so that we get a more in bulk, a better pricing at all? Have we thought about that? Apparently, this product is made in Sault Ste. Marie, so it certainly is not coming out of the country. Have we done any investigations on that?
Mr. Houston, or Ms. Houston, or Mr. Gordon?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We haven't done anything with any other municipalities at this point in time.
Considering there's numerous municipalities dealing with it, I'm wondering if maybe after this tender passes, if it's something that maybe we should be looking at, if we can get a better bulk purchase on the product. It may not be up to us, it may be up to the consultant or the technologist that's doing the work, for them to do it, but they may be able to, we may be able to...
I think that's probably a good idea to take it back to staff to advise to do so. Councilor Gazola, are you still on this item?
Well, I just wanted to free information, just to pass along. It's working out with this at $155 a tree. Last year, I had two, I have two big ash trees in my backyard, which I had injected, and it costs $650 a tree. So this is...
It's a good deal.
This is a very good price.
Okay, we're moving on to tenders. Roof rehabilitation for COF. Any questions? Councilor Fernandez?
Thank you. I am a little bit puzzled, and I did see Cynthia here, but now she's left. Somebody needs to help me understand why we are needing to replace the roof on a building that we've just done some major work in the last number of years. Is it, was it existing roof, or, I was trying to find that through the report.
The report states that this portion, the only portion of the roof that was replaced was where the solar system was on. The rest of the report, the roof was not, was taken as is.
Okay. So there was no work done on any of, Cynthia's walking in now. So there was no roof, no work done on the existing roof at any time during the renovations of the COF?
That's correct. And it was outside the scope of the original project. There was a roof tender done about two years ago, I believe, on another section of the roof, but that was separate from the project as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Gazola, on that item?
Yeah, just along the same line. So I suspected that when you did the work, all the work out there, you really, even though it wasn't planned as part of the major budget, you were aware that you were going to have to do this shortly?
That's correct. We expected that it would be required within five years, but we tried to extend the life of our roofs as far as we can, so that's what we did in this case as well.
Okay. My question is, are there any other issues like that that you know about at this point? Because it's a substantial figure.
For that property?
For that property, yeah. Again, that's something that you could bring back.
We're not aware of any other areas in the roof that don't meet the requirements.
But are there any other large expenditures that you plan to do with that property that were not carried out under the original contract? Are there any surprises in the next few years?
Right. Those things are being planned through our general provision for that building.
Okay, so there's no major items that are going to pop up in the next several years?
Not that I'm aware of.
Other than what you can manage with your general provision?
That's correct.
Okay, we're moving on to the Ontario Street and David Street construction. Kennedy and Palmer, we've dealt with. Consultant services for Upper Blair Creek. Councilor Fernandez?
Thank you. Just puzzled as to why we would have to pay for this, because my understanding, and having been involved in the Ontario Municipal Board hearing, it was through the hearing that the decision stated that there needed to be ongoing monitoring, and I guess I'm wondering why we're not at least partnering with the development industry on the cost of monitoring.
Is there anyone here that can answer that tonight? I'm not sure that there is, but Mr. Chapman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. All I can point out is that the funding source for the project is 100% development charges, so in a sense, it is the development community that's paying the full cost for the monitoring work.
Okay. I mean, I'm glad to see that we're extending the state of the watershed for three to five years. I think that's really, really good, but there won't be a full build-out at that point in time yet. So will we be looking at additional monitoring of Blair Creek in ensuing years, after the five-year period?
Ms. Houston?
Something we'll have to report back on.
Okay. Yeah, I'll go offline and ask some of those questions. Thank you.
Mr. Hagie, I think, has a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a copy of the D.C. study with me, and it shows that we're continuing this monitoring up to 2031, so essentially to build it.
Okay. That's about the end of the tenders. Those in favor of the tenders? Opposed? That's carried. Now we'll go to the yellow pages, reports of the committees. Community Infrastructure Services Committee report, Councilor Ionidas.
It is moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Etherington, that the report of the Community Infrastructure Service Committee be adopted through items one through eight.
Okay. And Councilor Singh on this item, this report?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor, for item number eight, for it to be voted separately, more to the fact of the last paragraph of item eight, and that the last sentence be broken, so two separate votes for, I'll quickly read it out, that the 40,000 tree planting grant received from Kitchener-Mohawk Hydro be used towards cost of replanting in 2014 of street boulevard trees that have not been replanted due to lack of funding. So that sentence be voted separately, and then the other intent of the motion based on the principles of the first removed, first replaced, so that to be voted separately. And I'll speak to that later.
So voting on items number one through seven, then. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Item number eight, you wish to speak to the third paragraph, then? Councilor Singh?
Yes, thank you. So similar to some of the issues I had during committee, the intent of adding that funding from Kitchener-Mohawk Hydro towards replanting, I think the program needs to be all-encompassing citywide. I totally believe with that sentiment, but I think we can't limit staff to prioritize where necessarily needs to be to receive the most impact, as well as they have the expertise at hand to necessarily point or plan out where the planting should take place more immediate, rather than a very stringent parameters of first removed, first replaced. So that's why the intent of that last motion... So that's why the intent of that last motion to be voted separately.
Okay, I'll wait for the others to comment. Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand what Counselor Singh is driving at from.
He wants to direct the, if I, you can come back, Counselor Singh, but I think he was towards some of the EAB stuff.
Counselor Gazola, it's something that committee had already approved. It was to the last paragraph, if you're looking at the report, and that last sentence changes the essence of entirety of what the focus of that, those dedicated funds would be. And I'm asking for that last sentence based on principle of first removed, first placed, to be voted separately. So the first removed, first replaced, that's a very strong parameter or stringent parameter, whereas the earlier part of that motion simply just directs staff to allocate that money received from Kitchener Mahidro towards boulevard tree planting wherever they see best suited.
For the benefit of.
Still not clear, because that's what they, I asked staff about that after the meeting, and that's what they said they do every year with the.
That's what they do, but if you look at the the motion, Counselor Gazola, the last sentence saying based on first removed, first or first removed, first replaced, gives them a very very stringent guideline direction. So they may have told you that differently, but that last sentence sets a very strong parameter. So I'm asking for that direction to be voted separately.
We can do that, we can split it.
So you want it to vote be voted on separately?
We're just splitting it off, yes.
That's all.
That's all we're doing.
You don't want to change it, you just want to vote on it separately?
We're just splitting the sentence, and I think that's clear. Counselor Galloway Seelock?
Yeah. It ended up being the motion that I brought forward in committee, and I think it's really important that we keep the based on the principles of first removed, first replaced, and let staff take it from there. I think it's important for us to set that direction for staff, and I think if it wasn't feasible for them to plant in a certain area, that they could go to the next area, and I think that they would they could take it from there. So I really think we need to give that direction, because if not, it could really open up the focus and the intent of where this is going. So I would like to see that based on the principles of first removed, first replaced, be continued forward for the direction of staff.
Okay, let's deal with item number eight, and I'll deal with the the first two clauses and first two clauses, period. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Now, the first portion of the third clause, except for the words based on the principle of first removed, first replaced, we're not dealing with that yet. Those in favor? Look at the look at the first part of this, look at the first part of the sentence, just eliminate the last few words for the moment. I'll do it once more. Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Now, the last words, based on the principle of first removed, first replaced. Those in favor? Those opposed? The, well, let's do this again. Recorded vote. It's very simple, we're just dividing a motion. You may now vote. If you wish to have the words there, you vote yes. Those in favor? Those opposed? I think you just politicized the planting of $40,000 worth of trees. Finance and Corporate Services Committee, Counselor Davy?
Thank you, Mayor Etherington. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Singh that the report of Finance and Corporate Services be adopted, and there is just a single item number one.
Those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Planning and Strategic Initiatives, Counselor Vravnavich, item numbers, well, you go ahead, and this this third one will be taken separately, it's conflicts.
Just move on myself.
Just hang on. Okay.
It's moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Galloway Seelock, numbers one, two, and three in the report.
Okay, we'll deal with items numbers one and two first. Counselor Fernandez?
Can we do number two separately, please?
Yes. So item number one, those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Item number two, those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Item number three, there are two conflicts on that one. Those in favor? Opposed? That is carried with the conflicts noted. Heritage Committee, Counselor Etherington?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Singh. We dealt with number two. Did we deal with three and four?
No, not yet.
So it's just number one?
You have to move one, three, and four with defer.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I would ask Council to move to move one, three, and four.
Okay.
Those in favor?
Seconded by?
Seconded by Counselor Singh.
And there, we had to get it on the floor first? So now there is a deferral request for item number three. As I said earlier, it was, staff are supportive of the deferral to at least be the earliest of September, so I don't know that we can put a date to it specifically, just be deferred until staff bring it back, perhaps that would be the wording. It's moved by for deferral, Counselor Galloway Seelock, seconded by Counselor Glenn Graham. Those in favor of the deferral? Opposed? That's carried. And now items one and four. Those in favor? Opposed? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Gazola.
Question number four relates to the library. The property owner is the city of Kitchener. Well, what are we asking from ourselves?
I've got Mr. May and you, who do? Mr. May? Someone has to click off. Okay, so now we can go to Mr. May.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The Kitchener Public Library Board had requested deferral so that they had time to consider the potential listing, and staff agreed with that. And as I understand it, actually, the board has dealt with it. So we'll go to Heritage Kitchener at the first meeting in June, and we'll come back to you shortly afterwards.
Do you wish to speak?
It does need to be deferred because it wasn't considered by Heritage Kitchener. So the process would be that it'll now go to Heritage Kitchener in the first week of June, and then come back to you in the following council meeting.
Counselor Galloway Seelock?
Yeah, just from the the board perspective and from the library perspective, it was understanding that the city of Kitchener does own the building, just having an opportunity for the board to see it before it went to Heritage Kitchener. We did have our meeting last week, and everyone seems fine with moving forward with with that. So it was just because they're not the property owner, they weren't notified, and it was just by chance that they happened to see it on an agenda and request it be deferred until the board could meet and just discuss it, and that's been done.
All right. We're, I think, did we vote on that? Okay, those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. So that's the end of the reports. Is there any unfinished business? There actually is. Been asked to just remind people who may be watching online, if you have not already done so, and for counselors to remind folks in their neighborhoods to do your Kitchener, your say, become involved. There are many different dates and locations of the events. Well, there are two more, I guess, May the 29th and May the 31st, for people to become involved. But there's a lot of information, and become involved, and putting your comments online as well. Any other unfinished business? Counselor Gazola?
I have a question, a question, a two-part question, three parts. I just curious as to when we're going to get water into our reflecting pool, and the second part is, why does it take so long?
Well, it was painted this week, and the lights are going in today, so I presume the water's going to become there very quickly. And why? I don't know. Mr., can anybody answer that? I guess you're going to get an answer about, oh, Cynthia? Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, it's been a very wet and cold spring, and we need a certain number of days, two or three consecutive days, in order to paint the the deck of the reflective pool, and we have to put three or four coats on it.
When was the, when was the ice removed?
When did the ice come out? Likely in March.
End of March.
Okay, I'm I'm looking forward to technology improving, that we can paint and get it done up a little faster than having it sit like an eyesore for two months, but that's another issue.
Technology has not been able to control the weather yet.
I don't expect it to control the weather, I expect it to improve so that it can deal with the weather. That's another issue. The other issue that I have, and I'm going to just keep bringing it here and bringing it here, but Saturday night, I took a stroll down King Street, and I was amazed to, again, find all kinds of garbage bags put out beside our garbage containers. I just, I don't know how many times I've brought the message here, and it's obviously fallen on deaf ears, but, and I noticed tonight when I was coming in at at 4:00 for this meeting, there was, there was a, one, one of the containers beside it was loaded up with a year's supply of cardboard boxes. Mind you, they were torn down and folded, but they still don't look right on our main street.
It's an issue, it's an ongoing issue that the BIA should be talking to the members about, because they do have access to the bins, and I would suggest staff could follow through with that. Counselor Etherington?
Yeah, question, Mr. Mayor. Along with other council members, I learned at the weekend that in my ward, the boathouse will not open as planned in June, and probably be delayed into mid-September, losing all summer business and remaining closed for the Blues Festival. So I have a couple of questions, and I I have a number of questions, but I'll keep it short. Because, as council knows, we've invested $350,000 in exterior upgrades, and we're about to invest $410,000 on interior renovations, and now look like we're going to face a loss of rental income for the summer. I would like to ask if delays apparently caused by a lack of hydro supply and heritage mechanical issues will result in extra costs to taxpayers, and if so, how much? I have a second question, Mr. Mayor. Do you want me to get them all out, or?
Well, if they're all related, yes.
Yeah. My second question relates to the fact council was told nothing about hydro heritage mechanical issues, and learned about them through the media, despite the fact I'd been asking for information for about a month. So I'm curious what happened there, and more importantly, why on the potential heritage issue, like why we didn't know about this? We're in a heritage park in a heritage neighborhood, and yet we didn't seem to know about these, know in advance of these heritage problems, and we certainly did not appear to know about the hydro issue, despite at least seven months, perhaps a year of intense scrutiny paid to the boathouse. So those are my questions.
Mr. Fletcher?
Through the mayor, I will, I'll try and pick off each one of your questions one at a time. I think one of your questions was the need to upgrade the electrical service, and what I can tell you is that it's not unusual in an, especially in older building or a building that is of a change of use from its original design, that the load capacity or load requirements aren't fully known until full design is underway. And what I mean by full design is that all the equipment and all the types of equipment and their load capacities are known. So while the tenant had full access to the facility, we were also involved in some of the initial design. Until the full design requirements were known, you can't do all of your load calculations. So that's answered to one question. I think one of your questions was related to mechanical requirements, and heritage is not the only consideration in terms of where mechanical systems go. We have code requirements, we have heritage requirements, we have parks design, and we have urban urban planning design processes that folks have been working their way through. We feel that we have a solution to all of the mechanical requirements, and again, that's been an iterative process through the detailed design. So we're at a point where I think we're ready to move forward. Some of the the reason that there has been a bit of design delay on this project is because as the tenant develops their plan, they've moved some things from one side of the building to the other, and that's required redesign.
And the extra cost?
The extra cost for?
The delay, are we going to be investing more than the $410,000 as it progresses, as the development progresses?
It is not our intent to go beyond the approved budget. Our intent is to get all the details of the design requirements, and then the city and the tenant sit down and review the budget and those detailed design requirements, and we've both committed to staying within the approved budget. It may mean making some decisions on some some of the interior components.
On the hydro and mechanical issues, it took us and the tenant seven months to find out about those?
I'll I'll remind council that in in some respects, this is the tenant's project. So from a facilities management standpoint, we are interested in the project to make sure it's successful. We're interested to make sure our asset has integrity, but the tenant has been driving the timelines on this project.
Cynthia, in relation to the actual facility, can you tell me if we're going to run into other problems between now and mid-September?
We don't anticipate. It has been a real challenge to look at putting a commercial kitchen with all of the mechanical requirements in a 1,000-square-foot facility with very limited ceiling space. We think we're past that, and that that should be our biggest challenge.
Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez?
Thank you. No, nothing for you, Cynthia. I believe I requested a few months back a list, a populated list of curb cuts. I haven't seen anything, and I wondered if there was a report that was going to be coming forward, because I do recollect that there was some monies left in the, in a pot. There are a number of areas, I think, that with trail improvements happening, that we really need to get some of these curb cuts done. And the other question I have is, you know, I was I was cycling on this beautiful weekend, I kept running into trail gates, and I know. I kept running into trail gates and I know that there was supposed to be a report coming forward about the trail gates. I'm still wondering when that's going to happen. Some of them are in some pretty dangerous positions because you're coming down a hill and there's a trail gate at the bottom, or they're really absolutely useless because they're halfway in the trail and the trail goes way past it. So kind of under about those two issues.
So that's a follow-up on, we've dealt with, requested that before. Probably it's going to require getting back to us from staff.
No, that's fine.
Because there are a number of things there that probably be best to get everything together.
Okay, all right. And I have something for new business when we get there.
Ms. Houston, did you want to? Okay. Councilor Gazola?
I just wanted to have a follow-up on the, on the boathouse. I wanted, I wondered, was there in our agreement with tenants, was there dates as to when they, as to when we're starting to collect rent and were there penalty clauses if those dates weren't met?
Either Ms. Fletcher or Mr. Rigier. Ms. Fletcher, do you have that?
Through the mayor, I'll have to go back and reread the agreement. I know there were proposed dates, but we always realized that once we got into detailed design, there may need to be a bit of a contingency in terms of timing.
As far as our budget was concerned, when did we estimate to be starting to collect rents?
We estimated to start collecting rent following, once the tenant opened for...
But there was no specific timelines on that?
Through the mayor, we did estimate a timeline based on what the tenant thought was going to be successful, but...
And what was that?
The estimation was in June.
Okay. If it's possible, could you inform council as to what the details on that and what, if there were any penalties considered?
Mr. Chut, would you have?
It's whatever's in the agreement, that's...
Mr. Chut?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sure that can be done. Just the other point to make is that there's no operating budget impact because all of the rent revenues were going to repay the capital investment. So it simply delays the start of that payback period.
That's good information.
Okay. A new item, Councilor Rubanich.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it just goes back to the ongoing cleanup of all of the trees from the winter storms that we had, the ice storm and so on. As I understood the last report that we got, we're now done all of the residential streets. There's the odd one that I'm still seeing and when I do, I'll endeavor to make sure I inform staff of those. But in addition to that, I know concerns continue to arise about the state of our parks and our trails. And I've been getting a number of concerns from residents around that. Do we have any better of an idea in terms of what the timing is going to be in terms of getting that cleaned up so that we can share that information with our residents? Because they are, quite frankly, becoming quite concerned and quite agitated by it. And I quite frankly, don't know what to say to them.
Houston?
We can certainly report back on that. I know staff are trying to get a handle on how long it is going to take to get those cleaned up because as you can appreciate, there's still quite a few trees in those areas, long trails and parks that need to be attended to. At the same time, we also have to turn our minds to our regular activities that we need to keep up as well. So we'll see what we can do in terms of putting some time estimates to that and bring that back.
Okay, great. Thank you, I'd appreciate that. Okay, I see no others. Okay, one more. Councilor Fernandez?
This is new business, so are we?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
This is questions, answers, new business, unfinished business.
Okay, I just, with the beautiful weather upon us and many of us have hopefully turned to our Kitchener Blooms, our gardens and our front yards, I just wanted to remind everybody and those who are watching that there's some really important events coming up with the Kitchener Blooms Committee. Thursday, June 5th is a workshop regarding rain gardens at the Country Hills Community Center. The June 29th is the Bloom Bike Tour. Wednesday, July 9th is a deadline for nominations. So get out there and nominate as many as you can. We'll see if we can beat Councilor Singh from last year and all the nominations he had. The Bloom Bus Tour is August 10th. And Wednesday, September 17th is the Celebration at Victoria Park Pavilion. And most of that information should be available on our website, if I'm not mistaken. Get out there and plant.
It's a good program. All right, it's been moved by Councilor Fernandez, seconded by Councilor Rubanich, that bylaws be given first reading. However, there is one late starter. Clerk?
Through you, mayors, there are late starters pertaining to FCS report number one with regards to the 2014 municipal election. There is also a late starter regarding Planning Strategy Initiatives Report Number Two for Zone Change, as well as Number Three on the same report dealing with an OPA.
Okay. Those in favor of the bylaws, first reading? Opposed, that's carried. It's been moved by Councilor Etherington that council resolve itself into committee of the whole. All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Councilor Etherington, you're on.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask someone move a second reading of the bylaws. Councilor Ionatus moves a second. All in favor? I would move each agenda item with the exception of the Kennedy Palmer item, which is number one V1. So that's item...
We've dealt with all of those.
Sorry. You move number two?
I have a question.
Press your button.
I'm just curious as to what this has cost in the past. Do we have any idea? It's not a big thing.
Through the mayor, I don't believe that there has been a cost associated with this in the past. This is a joint venture that's entered into with the other area municipalities and this committee isn't pointed in on an as-needed basis.
That's what I expected, but just wanted to clarify that.
That's okay, same question.
No question. So again, I would ask, do you want to do them one at a time, Mr. Mayor, or all of the remainder? One at a time, thank you, okay. Item number one, those in favor? Number, item number two, those in favor? Against? Item number three? Question, Councilor Gazola?
Looking at page three dash two, if I look at the timelines, you say initiate the RFP in the spring of 2015, award the contract June 2015, and implementation, September the 15th, September 2015, which is when it normally would start. I'm not, I'm not sure what you're asking for. Because the existing banking contract goes to August 31st, 2015, and you're saying start the new one September 2015. What are you asking for?
Through you, Mr. Chair. If we switch banking providers, it could take six to 12 months to actually transition to that new provider, over which timeframe we would still be banking with CIBC. So this presumes that we'll be moving to a new bank and taking those six to 12 months to prepare in the backend the transition.
Okay, so you're, it's possible we could move ahead without having to go along, but you want the opportunity to delay it if you have to?
And that's why the wording in the motion is to extend by up to one year. The thinking is that we would move to the new provider as soon as the implementation tasks are complete.
Okay. I have a second question. Can you, I don't know if it's possible, but can you give, give us some idea, a rough idea of what banking costs us now?
Through the chair.
I just want to sort of, some indication of how big an issue this could or could not be.
Through the chair, as noted, our fees are very competitive. I believe our annual banking fees are in the neighborhood of about $35,000. And we also have a portion of our interest-bearing account that earns no interest. And if you equated an interest value to that, it would be about $18,000 a year. So all in, our banking arrangements cost us about $50,000 a year.
Okay, well, that leads me to the next question. It's not a major amount of money. Why, why would the, I wonder why it takes so long? Thirty, it says here, it takes 36 to 72 weeks of work on our behalf? Am I reading that wrong?
That's correct. And I, we've tried to allude to that in that paragraph. It has a lot to do with the high level of integration with the bank around automated deposits, electronic transfers, the purchasing card program, how we electronically process credit card payments, that sort of thing. So there are so many complex integration points, it would take a significant amount of time to disentangle all of that with CIBC and then reestablish those with a new banking provider.
Any other questions? Councilor Davy?
Thank you. I'm okay with this. I just have a question to sort of follow up to Councilor Gazola's. Now, it is such a small amount and yet I'm hearing it's a significant amount of staff time should a transfer come in place. So without getting too deep into the detail, like how do you, how do you, how does staff balance the internal costs versus what the RFP comes back as?
Through the chair, part of the decision-making process and the recommendation in the RFP will consider the cost of transitioning. In fact, when we looked at extending for five years the current agreement, we looked at that very issue, the costs potentially to go out and establish a new relationship versus the savings we might realize. So we believe that we need to go out to market to test those assumptions, but we will factor in the cost of transitioning as a part of the decision-making process.
So it is possible then that our, the bank we're currently with could come in with a bid that's higher in absolute terms, but we could, staff would reserve the right to stay with them because in terms of staff cost, it would be a better deal?
Council would reserve that right, yes.
Council, thank you.
Those in favor? Item number four moved, moved by Councilor Singh. Any questions? Councilor Singh?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hagie, really ecstatic to see the region taking an uptake on supporting and giving an exemption. So was that, did that came through the region going in that direction on their own or did it stem from our conversation that we, I guess, initiated?
Through the chair, the region was made aware of our position. I, I don't know that I have influence to make them do anything. I believe I don't, but I know that the mayor, who's a member of the working group, made that known and I made it aware to kind of my counterpart at the region.
Okay, good. Well, the mayor always does good work, so. The 50%, obviously, it's still going to have an impact and the report outlines various different ways to take care of that. And I think the report states of setting up a potential reserve fund. Now, alternative one, is there preference through staff of the various different alternatives? In my mind, I was seeing alternative one being the most sensitive to, of course, the general tax base as well as more for accountability and the fact that we will be able to recuperate the utility costs as well.
Correct. So staff would recommend alternative one, setting up a new reserve fund. It would be funded, there's a chart just above it on page four dash six that essentially sets out the funding breakdown for that. And staff would look for capital closeouts from the various funding areas in order to fund that reserve fund.
And that would be over the four-year period, five-year?
Five-year.
Five-year period?
Correct.
And last question. I lost my track of thought. I was going somewhere with this. Oh, yes. So that's based on 100 acres presumably that we have. That's zone for industrial and I'm approximating a little bit. Do we have the potential to limit that to say the first 50? I know this is a question I had asked earlier as well, when I had encouraged our direction this way forward. Can we, can we do that as well to limit the, I know the report states as 900,000 would be the full exemption cost. If we were to set just the first 50, 50 acres, would that just divide that potential cost by half?
Through the chair, it would not. The estimation here is for the industrial development that we anticipate over the next five years. So it's not that full 100,000.
A hundred.
Hundred acres. It's the, and I don't know exactly what the acreage is, but it's essentially the industrial amount that we anticipate in the next five years.
Oh, I see. Okay, all right, great, thank you. And this is great.
Any other questions? Those in favor of number?
No, 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 there's lots of questions. There's a queue full of people.
There's lots of questions, just, I'll point to them, okay?
Councilor Galloway, a seat lock?
I have questions with regards to, first of all, was it always intended that this would come to committee of the whole?
Through the chair, based on timing, it was coming to this meeting and the follow-up answers, timing-wise, would have to come to committee of the whole. And when we were setting out our original timeframe for the development charge process, it was anticipated that this would be the timing for final bylaw approval. So that date has been known and published to stakeholders for a number of months.
Is it June that we have to have this done by? Is that why?
Correct, by the end of June.
By the end of June?
Yes.
My question would be obviously with regards to the Southwest Recreation Facilities. And I just feel like it's not even necessarily time when we're dealing with the development charge bylaw because I don't really have any concerns with the way that it's set out. I know it's to do with the capital budget, but it just feels weird dealing with it tonight. My question would be, obviously you've outlined three options and I'm understanding from the report that all three of those options will be investigated moving forward. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then I was just wondering if there's been any contemplation in looking at a fundraising component to potentially advance those facilities in the Southwest as well, like our Places to Play campaign that we did for the Activist Sportsplex where there was community members that were driving that fundraising? If that's been looked at or if that's going to be looked at?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we will be looking at it. I think I should manage expectations at this point. One of the challenges that we are going to have is that as we increase sponsorship opportunities and those types of things for other facilities, we spread out the opportunities and it sometimes becomes harder. So we're really going to have to look at not only fundraising campaigns, but naming rights on those facilities and decide where can we get the biggest bang for the buck because quite frankly, the price tags for many components within that park are so high, the fundraising alone won't do it, but it'll be one stream of revenue that we'll use.
But yes, it's being considered as an option, like the Places to Play campaign, that the community members were assembled and really drove that campaign.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. No work has been done on that to date. It's certainly an option that we'll look at as we flesh out the naming rights and all of the other revenue streams for the park.
Okay. Thank you, that's all my question.
Councilor Fernandez?
Thank you. This 50% reduction, that wasn't in the original development charges study, was it? I don't remember seeing that.
Correct, it was not a part of the original DC bylaw. It was a follow-up that was requested by committee last month.
By committee?
Correct.
Okay. I apologize, I don't recognize that because I came as a bit of a surprise, so I don't So I, I don't know how I missed that. Because I do have a significant concern about another incentive program. We've got our downtown incentives. We've got all kinds of other incentive programs. And now we're going to, I mean, where do we stop with incentives? And if the region is doing it, I think it's up to them because with the new Regional Economic Development Group that we've set up with the other municipalities through the region, I can understand why they would want to offer a fifty percent incentive. But I don't understand why we would make it doubly increase by another fifty percent. Can you help me understand that?
Through the chair, it's noted somewhat in the report, the first paragraph on page four dash four. Essentially, development charges are one of the significant barriers to entry for new industrial clients. It's a significant, significant component of their cost. And in order to attract them to Kitchener specifically, it's the, the belief that we would need to incent them in, in some way. So the incentive that's being provided here is a fifty percent reduction in industrial DCs. And it is a time-limited option, just like the downtown. So council approved extending the downtown exemption for the, essentially, the term of this bylaw. What's being recommended is also to have the industrial exemption in place essentially for the term of this bylaw. So it's not necessarily an ongoing thing. It will be reconsidered potentially during the next, next bylaw update, but it's not in perpetuity.
In 2019, I think. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And, and I just sort of heard that I was saying it incorrectly. So the region is offering the fifty percent incentive, but we're offering a fifty percent incentive so that manufacturing locates in Kitchener specifically. So how, is that, is that right? Is that what I'm hearing?
Through the chair, what's being proposed? I've read the, the regional report that just came out. So they're saying essentially they would take their, for industrial, they would take their non-residential rate and cut it in half for industrial clients. We're saying we would match that. So in the bar charts on page four dash five, you'll see that there's kind of two colors or two components to it. And essentially, the regional share would be reduced by half, and the city share, the top part of the bar, would be reduced by half as well.
Okay. I do feel a little bit uncomfortable with, with, with doing this because I do, I mean, what is Waterloo doing? Are they doing something like this too? Is Cambridge doing something like this as well?
So I've read the regional report. As I mentioned, Waterloo has already passed their bylaw last year. So they are not, they're not opening, reopening it. They did not consider a fifty percent reduction, so they are not doing that. Cambridge is underway right now, and there's no indication from them what they are going to do.
Okay. So are you saying that fifty, that the region's fifty percent incentive is not enough?
Correct.
Okay, but we're going to be, we stand to lose nine hundred thousand dollars in revenue?
Of development charge revenue, correct.
Yeah, sorry, development charge revenue. And I mean, they've, we've already taken a number of projects off the table, which is on four dash three.
Correct, but those were deemed not necessary to to provide services for the expected growth up to 2031. So it's not that they were necessarily removed.
Okay, that's understood. Okay, I understand that. But I guess this is not going to the philosophy that I thought we have talked about in the past, and that's that growth pays for growth. And I, I mean, I don't, I honestly don't believe that if we've already got some incentive coming from the region that by reducing our, our nine hundred, by reducing our ability to collect DC charges to the tune of nine hundred thousand dollars, that, that, I mean, I saw the biography and I, we're really just moving over one position to being more, if that's how I read the graph, that we're moving from ninth position to eighth position to being more attractive to industrial?
It, it's more than that. There's a little arrow above where we are, so in the top graph. And then in the bottom graph, so we move from ninth or so down to
Down to fourth.
Of the people that charge DCs. You'll note there's three areas that don't charge industrial DCs at all.
Okay, all right. So, so these are the only ones?
Counselor Fernandez, could I just, well, there was a comment from Mr. Aguirre. Can we get that comment?
Oh, certainly. Mr. Aguirre has a comment.
Through you, Chair Etherington. I, I think I'd perhaps like to make a couple of observations here. One is that the context for investment in manufacturing jobs is actually North American-wide in, in our particular case. And we've recently had discussions with manufacturers who have, have been comparing us, not necessarily directly to our, to our, to our neighbors, although that's an interesting situation, but, but with, with opportunities for investment in the States, particularly in the southern states where very significant incentive programs are being made available. And when they talk to us about opportunities to expand plant or build new plants, particularly in the area of manufacturing, which is an area which I know council is concerned about, and they look at, they look at the development charge on expansions or new investment in manufacturing as a tax on manufacturing jobs. So they, their question to us quite directly is, are you not interested in supporting additional manufacturing employment in your region? Because this charge is quite significantly higher than it is elsewhere. And I think the, the, the second point I'd like to make is that manufacturing investment is quite qualitatively different than, 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 for example, residential or commercial. And in, in the case of manufacturing, almost one hundred percent of manufactured goods generally leave the region. And so they represent export dollars to the region. They're, they're jobs that just simply would not be here if, if the manufacturing investment hadn't taken place. So when we compare that to residential or to, to commercial development, commercial development in particular is, is generally following the marketplace. And they will go where there's a robust local economy. And, and retail investment in particular serves to circulate funds in the economy rather than to generate new, new wealth for the community as a whole. So this is a, this is a strategic concern for the, the con, the regional economy. And as you can see from the two tables or two charts there, we have competitors in the immediate area which are, which are not charging development charges at all and more dramatically actually sell industrial land, municipally-provided industrial land at a significant discount so compared to what we can produce industrial land for. So we're, we're at a disadvantage, significant disadvantage for, for investment in manufacturing jobs in this, in this community.
Okay, thank you for that, that detailed response. I appreciate that. That's very enlightening. And I guess the other, the last question I have is regarding four dash three, which is processes to be used for funding Southwest Recreation Facilities sooner than shown in the background study. So am I to understand that these options, one, two, and three, are what we're definitely doing or this is what we're considering doing?
Through the chair, options one, two, and three will be considered by council. Whether there's action to fund the Southwest Recreation Facilities sooner out of any of those is council's decision, but they will be brought to council for consideration.
Okay, so that, there's no decision being made tonight on this, then?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So call of, I'm sorry. Question, Counselor Giselle?
Yeah, I have a, a number of questions, and then I want to, I have a comment to make. And part of it's been clarified. So the only thing we're dealing with tonight is this fifty percent bonus that we're, that we're giving out. We're, we're not approving the, the development charge bylaw. Just, just as one factor is what we're dealing with. Right?
It is, it is approval of the bylaw, so that there's
Oh, okay.
The second clause, the first clause is essentially that it be amended but for minor word tweaks, and the, the second clause is that the bylaw be approved.
Okay, then the, the third and, and fourth clauses deal with the, with this fifty percent. It deals with the new stuff.
Correct, but the, the third, well, the third clause is rolled into the amended bylaw. So there's Schedule B.
So if I don't agree with the third clause, I can't support the, the bylaw? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay, that's too bad because anyhow, okay, I have another question. In addition to this, we're, we're, we're giving the industrial a break by the ruling that we've changed whereby they only pay fifty percent of any increase in square footage as of June 2014 as opposed to going back to 1999.
Correct.
So what, and I, I think I asked that at the point, when we were dealing with it previously, what, what is the cost of doing that? There is, there's got to be a cost there because we're going to receive fewer, fewer dollars.
That's correct. It's a statutory exemption which can be funded through development charges. So the tax base and utility rates will not bear the cost of that exemption.
But what is, what is the amount of that exemption?
I don't have that figure with me.
Do we have any idea?
I don't, no.
Mr. Aguirre?
Through you, Chair Etherington. In the past three years, if history bears any indication, the past three years, we've had development charges in, on some of those lands, expansions on plants that would fit into this category of approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken as ever. Yeah? So about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over the last three years, just as an example.
Do we know that? Are we, are we guessing here?
Well, I'm, that's not a precise figure, but it's something that we're, that we're confident in.
So, so they're getting, they're getting a double break here. Okay, if they, if they're, if it's coming out of development charges, they're getting exempt, then who, who is picking it up? Are the rest of the, the new, the, the rest of the new growth is paying for that share of it too?
So on the decision that council's already made?
Yes.
About resetting the date?
Yes.
If there is a cost of that, it would be rolled into development charge rates as we go forward.
Yeah, so the other growth people are paying for that too in addition to their own growth.
Correct. And just for clarification, that exemption is only available to existing industrial buildings within the city of Kitchener right now. The exemption that's being talked about, or the, the fifty percent reduction being considered here would be for new people coming to town. So they would not benefit from that, that first one.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm not going to be supporting this. Had all the data, had all the things been on the table originally, I, I could support this more than the additional granting that we gave to our, to the downtown. Also, we gave, we've given startups additional funding. I mean, and this one here, it's, it's estimated to cost nine hundred thousand dollars, and that's all going on the backs of our taxpayers and our utility customers, which are, which are all our, our taxpayers. Now, in addition to that, they're going to have to pick up in their regional taxes the portion that the region is, is doing, doing. Now, I, I can, I can agree that, that it would be nice to help the manufacturing, but we can't do everything. We should have had this, in my way of thinking, if we were going to, thinking about doing this, we should have had this all on the table at the beginning so that we can pick the priority as to, as to where, as to where, where we're going to do, what we're going to, where we're going to put our, our dollars. We, we, we just can't afford to do everything. And for that reason, I cannot, I won't be supporting what the, these clauses and, and therefore, I, I cannot support the whole bylaw as, as you have now set it up to include this. Is it possible to have a vote just in dealing with the bylaw without this or not? So that's, that's, you know, I, I think I can appreciate, I can appreciate what we're doing. I can, I can, I can see, see somewhat the benefits of it, but our, our current taxpayers have enough to concern themselves about.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, there are two for six plus myself. I would remind council that we, we may have to ask for a unanimous consent to go beyond eleven o'clock. And I would hope that we would do that if we, if required.
Counselor Fernandez?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess two, or a question and a comment. Just in terms of the, the policy that's in front of us, I just want to understand how this relates to what the region's going to be dealing with. And in particular, we put some terms around our downtown exemptions. And my understanding is the proposal going to regional committee doesn't match up with those terms. How will that, subject obviously to what regional committee decides and regional council decides still, how will that impact us in terms of, in terms of our bylaw?
Through the chair, with regard to downtown, the region has, they are extending their downtown exemption, but not in the same way we are necessarily. So they are extending it. It reduces down. So they're having a hundred percent downtown exemption matching our borders up until December thirty-one, 2016. And then it would reduce to sixty-five percent for 2017, thirty-five percent for 2018, and would be eliminated on January first, 2019.
So that's the proposal that they're looking at right now?
Correct, that's straight out of their staff report.
Okay, but obviously, committee can still deal with something else?
Absolutely. This has not yet gone to committee.
And will that impact us in any way or?
Through the chair, it could, it should. We don't have to change our bylaw because of what they, what they have proposed.
Okay, that's what, what I wanted to clarify.
Could I, could I interrupt and give some background?
Sure.
Because I do sit on the steering committee at the region as well. And earlier on, when Counselor Fernandez had said that, well, why are we doing it now that, if the region is doing it? And I said, it's the other way around. This was fully discussed here around this horseshoe. And it's because we are doing this that the region determined they would match that. And I'll, I'll give my arguments about why. I'm just giving you information right now. In addition, the, there were several things that the region could have done with the, with the Reds and, and the boundary for the downtown. They matched the boundary which we extended in the East King Street area. But the, instead of the way we had put it with a, a three-year freeze, this is the, the point that I think Counselor Davy had come up with, the region is doing it slightly differently. And in the re-diminishing and the phasing out, just like we said, there was going to be a likely phase out after 2019. We certainly have set the stage for that. The region is doing it specifically within this bylaw, within their bylaw. So what the region does will have no impact on us and vice versa other than in the, in the case of the, the non-Reds, there are some, there's good rationale for it, and those are the arguments I would like to bring forward later on. But that's just the basic facts between the two bylaws.
Okay, well, thank you for that information. I guess the only point I would make on, on that is that it would be my hope that the region would endeavor to, to match ours when it comes to, to the downtown. And, but that's up to up to, up to them to decide. On the, the issue in particular of the industrial exemption, for, for me, this boils down to one thing, it boils down to walking the talk. And I've heard all of us talk about the importance of supporting our, our industrial businesses that are in the community, the important role that they play from an economic development point of view, the fact that we recognize that our industrial businesses have taken a hit, that we have workers who are still looking for, for careers for the rest of their, their working life, and we need to support these businesses to grow and to succeed so that we have citizens who can continue to thrive in our, in our community. And for me, the proposal that's before us is doubly important because it also ensures that those opportunities aren't just presented in the core of the city, but in fact are possible around the city wherever we have industrial lands. So I would certainly hope that we do support this. It's, in my view, essential for the ongoing growth and success of our industrial sector, and something that we've heard is, is a top priority by our residents in the Embaronic survey, where jobs in the economy came as the number one, I'm sorry, number two priority rather, after dealing with transportation and traffic concerns.
I'm sorry, Mr. Van Wooten. Counselor Natski.
Just to follow up to Counselor Gazola's questioning and then response to Mr. Hagie's question, or an answer I should say, that, help me understand that the percentage of 50 percent reduction applies to properties that are existing with a, with an industrial building, and it's, it's expansion based in time, that timeframe to be exempt for 50 percent, and does not include any vacant piece of properties at all?
So through the chair, to clarify, there are two 50 percent industrial exemptions that are outplay and, are at play, and it's somewhat confusing. One council has already decided on, and that is to reset the date for a 50 percent expansion of an existing industrial building. And so a, an existing industrial building can expand by 50 percent and not pay one development charge based on its footprint as of June 1st, 2014. Council's already decided that, so that is in the bylaw. What does that play here tonight is essentially what, if they expand by more than 50 percent or if a new industry wants to come to town, what price do they pay on development charges? So they could either pay the non-residential rate, or council could decide to have an industrial rate that is 50 percent of the non-residential rate. And so that would apply if they expand by more than 50 percent in existing building or if a new industrial player comes to town.
So the new, so the new property would, is the recommendation of 50 percent exemption as you, as you pointed out?
Correct.
For vacant land and the new building being put on?
Right, so in essence, it would just cut the industrial rate in half.
Okay, so my next question is, how many industrial developers have requested this?
Through the chair, I'm not aware of any that specifically that have requested this, but I know through economic developments discussions with existing as well as potential investors into the city of Kitchener, they see the price of our development charges as a major hurdle to expanding here or coming to town.
Okay, so based on that answer and following what Counselor Fernandez also said, when I look at that bar chart on page four dash five, and we're sort of in the middle, and with the reduction, we move over a little bit, but we're not as high as Vaughn and Mississauga and Brant and all those other places, I am finding it difficult to understand how it's hard-pressed when yet some of those developers want to go and be located in the GTA area, and here our rates are much, much lower than, than GTA. Is that not correct?
Correct, so the, the top graph, Oakville, Vaughn, Mississauga, those are considerably higher. If you look down to the left, you've got Woodstock and London that don't charge anything. So geographically, we're kind of, well, financially, we're in the middle, and geographically, we're in the middle. So if a developer really wants to be in the GTA, they'll probably pay that price. If they don't want to be in the GTA and they're willing to go somewhere else, they have to decide, do they pay, you know, $15 a square foot to be here, or are they happy to go another hour down the 401 and pay nothing?
Down London, yeah. If, in terms of the recommendation, it's, it's broken down into five paragraphs or five sentences or statements.
Correct.
If you don't want to support number three, basically three and four paragraphs go together.
Correct, they're tied together.
I'm sorry?
Correct.
That's correct, okay. So if you're gonna not support one of those, you gotta really support not both of them together. Okay, and I can understand the concern of some of the councils who pointed out that, I mean, we need to, to encourage industrial development, and I certainly am not disagreeing with that, but on the other hand, it's, here, here's another exemption, here's another incentive of being burdened on it, eventually on a taxpayer, and you're talking about closeouts, et cetera, but still, it all still comes down from the closeouts, that money comes from the taxpayer in the first place.
Or utility rate.
Or utility rate, right. So in, in the end, it's back to the bottom line being the taxpayer. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
Counsel Galloway, Seelok.
I just wanted to make comments, is now the right time because I asked my questions? Are there, is now the right time to make my comments?
Go ahead.
Um, I don't believe that I supported moving in the direction of the industrial development charges. I didn't support the expansion of the development charges exemption in the downtown for the same reason. I think at the end of the day, again, we just continue to ask the taxpayers to pay for this, for development, and I have a concern with that. And while Embaronics may have said that the economy is, and jobs is one of their high priority, they also said that low taxes is as well. And we have options here. We're taking $900,000, of which $653,000 comes from the tax base, and another 250 approximately come from our three utilities. We can take that money, put it towards other projects, we can give it back to the taxpayer, or we can put it into reserve funds that currently are low to begin with. So we have options with what we could do with the $900,000, and I understand we're finding the $900,000 in order to do this, and that concerns me as well. I can't support the, the number three or four paragraph with regards to the 50 percent for the industrial development charges, and I request that when we do deal with this, I do not want to have to vote against the development charges bylaw, so I ask that we vote on that after we deal with clause three and four, so that I can make my position known on those with a vote, and then if required, I can still support the overall development charge bylaw because I think it's important that we move forward with the development charges and don't find ourselves in, in a stuck situation. So if we can do that from a procedural standpoint, I think it'll help. But again, I'm just gonna repeat myself, at the end of the day, we continue to ask taxpayers versus in our downtown, just development charge exemptions, as well as now again with the industrial development charge rate reduction. Again, it's coming back to the taxpayers to have to pay for it.
Counselor Dan Graham.
Thank you very much. It's, you know, there was a question about who requested this and whether there's any industrial people that have looked to this as, as an important feature, and we heard from a delegation not too long ago that said that this is really what they were looking for, that they had worked with staff, and that they did find that this is a benefit. The principle that was articulated is growth needs to pay for growth. I believe that this does because this isn't a favor to our industrial developers. This is an investment in our city, and we're finding the money because this can create jobs. If we look at the, the numbers on 4.4, if it's creating an additional 2,200 direct manufacturing jobs, if a manufacturing job pays on average $50,000, that's $110 million, not counting the 11,000 spinoff jobs. That's a lot of money in our economy. That creates a lot of taxes back to our city. This isn't a gimme. This is a way to incent development. Our economy is otherwise flattened, it's stagnating. This is a way to prime the pump to bring business here to our city, whereas otherwise they would go to Toronto where there's a competitive advantage of being in the GTA, or down the street where there's a competitive advantage of no DCs. I see that this is an opportunity for us to say that we are paying for, this is incenting jobs. This isn't throwing money after, after something that's just sweetening the pot in the hope that we're, we're begging for jobs. This is people that are already have a stake in the industry and in our region, in our city, and also incenting further growth. So I see this as a good investment because it takes our city, and it says, we're open for business, and we want your business here, and we're willing to, to create the right environment, and that's what a city can do, is create the right environment, not only with the quality of life that we've done with our city, but also the right economic conditions. So this investment will pay off handsomely, and I'm not sure what the payback period would be. Perhaps our Director of Economic Development might have a thought about that, but if you just look at the numbers, I think that you'll see that this can create a lot of jobs, and this isn't about the downtown versus the suburbs, but this is for the whole city. So I'm not sure why you wouldn't get behind this. I think this is a good investment.
Mr. O'Keehan?
In response to Counselor Glenn Graham's question, the, the payback for industrial DC reduction of 50 percent would be approximately five years from a new, from the point of a new investment.
May I say?
Yeah, I've, I had my name on the list a while ago, but I thought I should jump in. I want to ask a question first of staff and then make my comments. And I had, just been communicating with Mr. Chapman, so I'll ask Mr. Chapman. The two clauses that we are dealing with, the two 50 percent clauses that are on pages four dash one, do either of those result in a tax levy cost? Oh, I gotta put you on there, sorry about that.
Through, through the chair, I understand your question to be a tax levy increase?
Yes.
The answer is no.
Yeah, okay. And that's what I think people are failing to understand. The two clauses of 50 percent do not cause a tax increase. Period. We heard the, the answer earlier, given in a slightly different way from Mr. Hagie, that the exemption is based in the, in the DC bylaw, and therefore it is folded into the rates. And I think what we really have to do is just step back and take a deep breath because we're, we're forgetting to connect the dots. The dots in this case are the, the unemployment rate in our community, and we have very precious little that we can do about that. This is one of those things that we can do to assist the employment rate. This is about industrial jobs, a totally different kind of job and incentive that we've been talking about related to the downtown and, and others. I will not name the company, but I will say, from personal knowledge, there is a company here in the city of Kitchener who has made some significant investment and more recently did an expansion, but has also said that their business is good and they intend to expand again. But we're making preliminary inquiries to move that plant out of this community, and essentially the product, not necessarily the plant obviously, but the product, because of the DCs. It's a very significant cost. And while they were certainly pleased with the, the city's 50 percent, the comment was made, get the region to do the same thing, we'll stay here. And knowing that company and what they have invested in it, they will. And without the, I do not know the number of jobs that are there now, but it's in the hundreds. And this is one of the things that we can do for our community, our residents, our citizens, our taxpayers. The, this, this issue, I, I'm really surprised at, sort of coming as a surprise to others when we had essentially discussed this before. It's part of the rolling back, the, rolling forward the timeline from 1999 to 2014. And so this is being mirror imaged by the region, and that is what gives rise to that 4.3, or, sorry, the chart on page 4.5, to a reduced, and it puts us in a competitive state. We are no longer competitive on industrial land. And what Cambridge does in, in theirs, and they are, there's still some time to go on theirs, is immaterial. In fact, that's where a lot of the regional industrial development is going to occur, not in the city of Kitchener. So in fact, we are almost limited. We, we are limited in land, and therefore we are limited in the amount of deferral or incentive that we have available to us. But the assessment growth is significant, but more importantly, the job growth is even more significant. And I would be, be very disappointed, obviously, if, if there wasn't support around the horseshoe for this, recognizing it may not be unanimous, but clearly there are enough, there are at least six people around this horseshoe that, that connect the dots to understand that, what Counselor Banovich said, walking, walking the talk at this point in time, it's not costing an increase in the tax base, and I think that's what's been missing in the understanding of this. Why would we not do it?
Point of clarification?
Counsel Galloway, Seelok?
Yeah, my point of clarification would be around, I understand that it's not a tax increase, but $653,000 of the, on page four dash six suggests that in the chart on above, that the share of the projected industrial exemption costs come from the tax base. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct.
So it's not a tax increase, but it's not, it's also not built into the DC rates?
Correct.
Thank you.
Could I just?
May I say?
It's up to you as Chair of the Committee of the Whole, but I would, I would move that we ask for unanimous consent to, to go past our 11 o'clock timeline. We're almost there, we're not going to finish this in 10 minutes.
Can we follow on that? Those in favor of going past 11?
Carries unanimously.
Unanimous. Counselor Gazola?
No, it's Counselor Singh is next.
Counselor Singh. Do you have a point of order or?
I have a question.
Okay, then I have a floor then.
You're in line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the comments you, you've just made, and about connecting the dots. And I have connected the dots, and that's why I'm strongly supportive of this direction, and that's one of the reasons why I had pushed this strongly in, in last committee meeting as well, when, to be honest, I, when I had encouraged staff to go to the region, talk to the region, to see if there would be support on their end, I didn't expect them to, to have an uptake. I thought it was wishful thinking on our part, but I thought, you know what, we should take opportunity. But now that the opportunity has presented itself, and it's a favorable opportunity, but the arguments that are being made are very linear about the, the cost to the taxpayer. I'm very sensitive. For the last three and a half years, I have been very sensitive to the, the cost to the taxpayer, but this is not necessarily a cost. One, it doesn't increase the tax base immediately, or cost, increase taxes. Two, yes, the argument can be made, any dollar spent, be it from Reserve, be it from somewhere else, at the end of the day, it all is taxpayer money, and I absolutely agree with that effect. But the point is that we are not just giving money for the sake of giving money. There is a reciprocal benefit back to the city, to the taxpayers, and to the workforce here. We have assessment rule, and on top of it, we, we have vacant land that's serving us no purpose, because there are other communities that are charging, and they have more incentives for businesses to, to, to go there. I won't even, you know, make, make the case for Woodstock, London, or Toronto, which are not charging DCs, but comparable, close-by communities who could very well have the same businesses locate there. If you look at the chart on four or five, you look at Guelph, you look at Hamilton, you look at Halton, you look at Milton, are all within the range that the current DC charges are for Kitchener, if you don't take this. So those businesses, businesses could very well locate there. By taking this opportunity, we are giving a strong message to the business community that city of Kitchener is serious about the manufacturing industry, of wanting it here, wanting it at home, giving opportunity to our citizens for jobs in the manufacturing sector, as well as supporting our startups as well, which we've been continuing to do so. We're helping to form a dynamic economy. And when we don't take opportunities like this, we're doing a disservice to ourselves and to our citizens, and in the long run, it will cost a taxpayer exponentially. And that's why I strongly support this.
Councillor Gazala? Ayana, sorry.
Through you, Chair Etherington. I think it's been pretty clear from our residents that they have concerns about our economy, in particular with our manufacturing economy. I think it's been pretty clear that, it's been said even among here, why we concentrate so much on the tech. Well, okay, well, now we're not concentrating on tech, we're concentrating on manufacturing, different form of employment. The bottom line here is, this is critical for us. We're no longer in the game, as everyone else has kind of mentioned. We need this, we need this to create jobs, and this will be one of the stimulating factors. And again, we are dealing with an economy that's global. We're not only just competing with our neighbors, but we're competing against the globe. And if we don't, if we just sit on and rest in our laurels, then we're going to be in a worse off spot, and we're just going to, and then everyone's going to say, what did we do? Why didn't we do anything to protect those jobs? Well, this is what we're doing. We're trying to protect those jobs, but also add more jobs.
Councillor Gazala?
Yeah, this is my second opportunity, so I'll be very, very brief. I'm hearing the signs of doom and gloom, where we're, I hear the councillor to my rights says our economy is stagnant. I, I thought things didn't look all that bad around here, but it's misleading to say that this doesn't cost our taxpayers any money. It's $900,000 a year, if we take it out of our capital surpluses.
Point of call. Councillor Singh?
It's not 900,000 per year, councillor Gazala, it's 900,000 for the over five year.
Fine, thanks. It's going to cost $900,000. If we take it out of capital surpluses, it means that we've had more money there than we should have had, and by rights, that money should be going back to our taxpayers in the form of a lower tax. The other way, if we take it and add it, add a charge every year, it's, it, it may not increase taxes, but it may not allow us to decrease taxes. So it is, it is a cost on the backs of the taxpayers. Now, a few years ago, we made a decision, the previous councils made a decision to shy away from industrial land and all that, and to spend money in our downtown, and we went into a program where we gave educational institutions 30 to 50 million dollars. We went down that path. Now, we can't, my, my whole argument all along is not that this is a bad thing, but I, my argument is that we cannot do everything. We've given the commercial entities a, a break in the downtown, we're giving startups, we're giving, everybody's getting a break except for our taxpayer. It's time we gave the taxpayer a little break.
Any other comments?
Sorry, and I apologize for, one final comment, because I, I can't let that, some of those comments, go without a response. First of all, I don't think, there's very few people that would question the kind of investment that was made in bringing the educational institutions in downtown Kitchener, and what that has leveraged from other orders of government and from the private sector, literally millions upon millions of dollars of investment in our community, and is, quite frankly, transforming our downtown and our economic base as far as job opportunities go, both for young people and for other generations who are looking for employment. On the, on the issue of industrial lands, I agree, we need to look out for the taxpayer. The taxpayer has been very clear in terms of what their expectations are, increases at or below the rate of inflation going forward. If we're going to look out for the taxpayer, that means keeping these businesses in our community. That means attracting new companies to come and invest in our community, or to grow in our community, because if they don't, guess what happens? The reality is that they leave, and then we end up losing assessment, which means that only ends up costing our taxpayers more in the long run. And that's, quite frankly, a direction I'm not prepared to take our city. It's short-sighted and not wise.
No other speakers? We'll have a recorded vote, it's been requested, and councillor Galloway, Seelak, you want paragraphs three and four of the recommendation dealt with separately?
I want it dealt with first.
Okay, one at a time or together?
Together.
Together. So we're voting on paragraphs, on the blue sheet, paragraphs three and four.
Turn page four.
I'm sorry?
Four.
I'm sorry. Four dash, four dash one, paragraphs three and four of the recommendation. Those in favor? Recorded vote. That motion passes. Those in favor? Mr. Clerk, there is, I'll take the rest of that recommendation, and we'll vote on that, but am I correct, there's a clause that needs to be added to it?
Through your chair, Etherington, yes, because council's already given first and second reading to the bylaws, clause needs to be added to the remainder of this, this item to provide it with first and second reading, and then subsequently have it added for third reading as well.
So that clause is in front of each of us, that the bylaw be given first and second reading. So the vote is on the total recommendation with that addition, the rest of the recommendation, I'm sorry. Those in favor? That passes. Those in favor? Mr. Clerk, any additional items?
Through your chair, I didn't know there's not.
Move that the committee write-in report?
Those in favor?
It's been moved by councillor Etherington, and seconded by councillor Verbanovic, that the proceedings, that's, councillor Etherington would say this, that the proceedings and the pecuniary interests declared are approved, adopted. Those in favor? This is Committee of the Whole?
That the proceedings and the recorded pecuniary interests?
It's done.
Well, you're not supposed to do that, Mr. Clerk.
The, the third, bylaws for third reading, now this will include, in addition to the ones that we've just printed, that are on the printed agenda, the bylaw for the DCs as well. It's moved by councillor Fernandez, seconded by councillor Verbanovic, that the bylaws be given third reading. Those in favor? Opposed? Let's see, there's some hands. Those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. And it's moved by councillor Davy that we adjourn. 11:04, or five?